April 12th, 2007, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I would like to reiterate the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, approval of minutes. I have two changes. On page seven, that middle fairly large paragraph, it should say twenty-five decibels, D E C I B, hell yes. And then somewhere in this whole thing, I did open the, open it for public hearing, so it needs to state that somewhere.
Bob, I have, Mr. Chairman, I have one change.
Okay.
Or one question.
Put your mic on.
It says it's on.
It's on.
A question for lower. The amendment on the approval of the ordinance, landscape ordinance, our approval was to the effect that it would be effective as of ninety days after the effective date of the adoption irrespective of when a preliminary plat or site plan approval was submitted. And this, that condition was embodied in the county commission's approval. I talked to Stan, he says their motion is correct, so if their motion is correct, it doesn't really matter what our motion says.
I don't know if I understand the question.
If you look at the motion.
Where are we?
Page eleven.
Eleven.
Thank you.
The tail end, the last two lines, it's garbled. I think, a person that takes the minutes does a magnificent job, I don't know how she gets half of it right, but this one got garbled. Stan said that the commission got it correctly, and which is to the effect that ninety days after the effective date of the ordinance, any preliminary plat or site plan approval must meet the new requirements.
Okay.
And if the, if the commission has it correct, I don't think it matters what we say.
Correct, but you can still correct your minutes to reflect what.
Why don't we correct them then? So it reads, "Any preliminary plat or site plan approval must meet the new ordinance requirements." I think Stan, that's correct.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to adopt as revised.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we have one item on consent, does anybody want to pull that? Is anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay, see none, do I have a motion?
I'm reading.
Say it again.
I'll make a motion too, Brad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody. Okay, I didn't read that into the record, guess I should do that. The item on consent, Robinwood, request for preliminary plat approval for fourteen lot conventional subdivision to be known as Robinwood. Robinwood Vero LLC owner, James W. Young and Associates Agent, located at the northeast corner of Fourteenth Street Southwest, and Sixteenth Court Southwest, zoning classification R six, residential single family up to six units per acre, land use designation L two, low density residential up to six units per acre, density two point three three units per acre. We have a whole slew of public hearings here, the first is the Rock Ridge Pumping Facility, and that's a request for special exception use, approval for limited public utilities to be known as Rock Ridge Pumping Facility Residence, Indian River County owner, Eckler Engineering Agent, located at five sixty, Sixteenth Street, zoning classification R N, ten residential multifamily up to ten units per acre land use, and two median density two up to ten units per acre. And Steve, you're up.
Stephen Dirdof, current development. This is for the Rock Ridge subdivision Pumping Facility as a special exception use. A little background, there are four hundred and thirteen individual pumps located at homes in the Rock Ridge subdivision. During flooding and times of extended power loss, the Rock Ridge subdivision sewage system overflows and creates some severe health conditions. The proposed pumping facility will replace the four hundred and thirteen individual pumping units with one large pump. This pumping facility will also have a backup generator with a seventy-two hour fuel capacity. Staff has posted the required sign on the site giving notice of tonight's public meeting. Staff contacted the surrounding property owners by letter, and a public notice was published in the press journal. Staff received one phone call in response to the mailing from a part-time resident who supported the project, and the project is also supported by the Rock Ridge Property Owners Association. I placed a letter from them on your desktops. The site is located on Sixteenth Street between Fifth Court and Fifth Avenue. This is a twenty-two thousand square foot site, the area development will be eleven thousand square feet. Currently, there is a clubhouse on the eastern portion of the site, and that will remain on the western portion where the area development is, there is a currently, a horseshoe tossing ring that will be removed for the proposed pumping station driveway to be developed there, along with the biofilter which is in a separate little structure of its own. Here's an aerial of the area showing the existing clubhouse that will remain and the proposed pumping facility. You can see from the aerial that it matches pretty close to size of the existing homes in the area. The pumping building or residence, as we call it, we designed it as, to appear as a residence so that it would not, you know, look out of place in the community. It is also constructed of concrete block. Proposed landscape plan, there are four existing trees, two oak and two maple, they will remain on the site. In addition, there is thirteen new oak trees proposed, eight legos, and a hundred and thirty-five cocoa plum which will provide hedging buffer for the surrounding properties. This landscaping is very drought tolerant, and the only irrigation that will be used was at the beginning when the plants are planted, after they become established, the irrigation will be shut off. Staff recommendation is that the P, Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the board of county commissioners grant special exception approval for the proposed pumping facility with the condition that the facility maintain the appearance of a residence. Thank you, I'm available for any questions you may have.
I have a question, the, I certainly support this. When is the timing on the, when, it's two years ago that they suffered a disaster with the sewage overflow, when do you expect this pumping station will be in place?
It's scheduled to be completed in two thousand and eight.
When?
December of two thousand and eight.
So they're gonna have to go through two hurricane seasons? Let's, well, let me ask this other question. County appeared before the city of Vero Beach last week and was asking the city of Vero Beach for permission to put in a pumping station, I thought for sewage, on the post office site. Are these two related?
No, they're, they're two different projects, that was the, that was essentially a stormwater project, and the county is still looking at.
Actually, is Jim Davis here?
Okay, they're not related, Bob.
No, and it is actually, they're, they're both related in the sense that the county got a community development disaster relief initiative block grant in the amount of seven point five million dollars, and we're doing a number, several projects with that money, and both Rock Ridge projects were being done, but the stormwater, storm surge project is completely different.
Is there any way to accelerate this? I mean, it, you're talking two hurricane seasons.
Actually, we pretty much have to accelerate this based on our grant, and I think Utilities is doing some accelerating. I think y'all are buying some equipment.
Larry, well, I'm the utility department, I am the project manager on the job. The delivery time on the equipment is approximately six months. We have about a three hundred day construction period, that will include construction of the pump house and also the line installation. The three hundred days does not include, or includes the total job. There will be individual homes and sections that will be connected prior to the three hundred days, but the final job and closeout is approximately three hundred days.
Thank you. So you'll be phasing it in. What is the, I'm sorry, Georgie, I'm phisched. What is the, I mean, that place is fairly built out, wouldn't you say? So there's no need for reserve capacity on the unit, or is there a reserve capacity on the unit that could be taken up?
Do you, Larry, do you want to address that?
You left me, yeah, you left me too soon, Larry.
Excuse me. I want to clarify one statement, I said three hundred days, it's approximately a year and a half, so it's over three hundred and sixty-five days, so I'm sorry for that admission. And could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, is there any reserve capacity in the, in the plan? Are they the fixed capacity, you're just going to take up for that, that one section?
You're talking about additional sewage capacity other than what's connected? We're prohibited by the grants to have any other connection services other than what we have right now.
I never say that.
The, the system is sized above the theoretical, but we're prohibited from doing any other connections.
You said, how long is it going to take to get it done? Six hundred days?
Six hundred days, I'm sorry, yes.
That's, it was a total mess, that backup.
Oh, that's why you're doing the job.
It's a shame it can't be done before, well, I assume you'll move it as quick as you can.
This has been expedited as quickly as possible. One of the problems, as you're probably aware, is involve, we have both a Department of the Community Affairs Grant and also a FEMA grant pending, and these people work exceedingly slow, so that has been, been one problem, proceeding quickly with this. Plus, it's a very complicated job, there's a lot of pipe to run, equipment is, is a long delivery time also.
Hey Larry, do we have generators over there now for the, the individual pumps, or does it?
Yes and no, the generators we have are portable generators, there's something like forty-three sub panels that feed the four hundred and thirteen panels, and they're connected individually, the trailer is pulled around to each one, and we do make the connections and pump it out and then go on to the next units.
So there's backup.
Well, until this gets in, there is an interim solution that'll make it better than it was.
Yes, there is a generator dedicated for the, for the Rock Ridge subdivision, and that is usually put in place when we have advanced notice of storms, so that will be positioned and used if it's necessary.
Any other discussion up here?
Larry, I, I just want to commend your department for going really above and beyond and being so sensitive to the aesthetics of this. So you could have put up a wall, you know, and a couple bushes and just had all this equipment out there, but to go to this extent for the neighborhood, I'm, we don't have to commend you on that.
Well, thank you, we're trying to make it as unobstrusive as possible, and we have all of the, we think the necessary controls in it to make it a quiet installation as well as pleasant to look at.
Thank you.
Just as a point of interest, Bob, the stormwater solution, and what's the timeframe for that, for, for that community?
Actually, what we did with respect to stormwater, because the stormwater is also like the, the sewer project, it also is going to get a FEMA grant, a hazard mitigation program grant, and that's taking extra time. The, it is pretty much designed, but what we've decided to do is take the money that was allocated for the storm surge project in the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, DRI Development Disaster Relief Initiative, take those funds and put most of them in the sewer project and in, in a couple of the other projects we had, so we're going to fund it from another source and the FEMA grant, and basically it's lagging behind, I don't know when the actual completion date's going to be.
Is that a pumping, that's obviously a pumping system, where to?
I don't know the specifics.
I thought, I heard the other night, back to the lagoon.
I think that is, I think that's.
Back to the lagoon.
I think that's correct.
Those underground pi, uh, lines that go down, I guess twentieth?
I believe it's going to be discharged into the Sixteenth Street Canal, which is, which is an existing canal that runs through the main part of Rock Ridge.
I'm just asking because I know that Osseo Elementary experiences the same types of problems with storm surge, and this may be a partial solution to assist them if they get a pumping system and can inject it into one of those systems also, if that's allowed or something.
Can you use the right, can you use the right of eminent domain to get the land you need for the pumping station?
Yes.
Even if it's owned by a county, a city?
I'm not going to go there.
Forget the question.
Okay.
Any other discussion up here?
I believe the city will, is, from what I understand now, is agreeable to giving the land, but it's yet to be done.
So basically, you're going to have a canal right there in, on the north side of that, those buildings that are down there on Sixteenth Street?
Yes, that portion, that portion of the canal is covered, well, there's a culvert that runs from Route One, and it goes down to, it's covered down to about Third, Third Court.
Tell me, tell me you're going to put some buffer in between those buildings and the canal, or the construction that's going to be on the postal site, is it, I mean, that looks like a solar thorn sticking out there now with the canal nice and clean and all the buffer is gone, you cut down all the.
That, that again was, was one of our projects, the vegetation had to go out of there because it was impeding the storm runoff flow. We did leave the palm trees, but the vegetation there was, was either mangroves or Brazilian peppers, and they just had to come out, otherwise, we just can't get the flow through that canal that we need.
Is there going to be any, whatever the city does there on that piece of property, there's going to be a buffer, there's got to be a buffer.
That's absolutely, that will be determined by the city and up to the development. That portion right there is in the.
It's county property.
What?
It's owned by the city, but it's in the county.
Yeah.
So it's got to go under county code, duh? No?
No, I don't.
Not the postal site?
Yeah.
No, it's not in the unincorporated county, it's in the city.
Seventeenth Street is a breakoff point, is that a jog that goes down in the city?
Yes.
Is that one jog that goes down the city?
Yeah, Fairline Harbor is also in the city.
In the city?
Yes.
Okay.
And that right away is an F dot right away, so.
Oh, it is?
Yes. It's not owned by the county.
Okay. You made me smarter, thank you. That's hard to do. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing, do we have any comments from the public? State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Phil Carpenter, president of Rock Ridge Homeowners Association. I live at three twenty-six, Sixteenth Street in Rock Ridge. I appreciate you all doing all you can, you know, to help us to get our pumping facility in. It's been a long time, you know, it's, you know, we've had, Rock Ridge really, you know, they had a hard time during the hurricanes. All this sewage and stuff backed up and it caused a great problem, and also we've had a huge drainage problem with this Sixteenth Street Canal and ditch line trying to get it cleaned out, and it's took, with Larry's help and with the county, it's took nearly two years to get this started. And it was something that was built back in the fifties, and that canal was put in for one reason, to drain US one. And over the years, with all the rezoning, the building of Kmart and all these places, they put all this asphalt in, and what's happened, you had a fourteen-foot ditch and all of a sudden you had twenty-five feet of water. It's like trying to pour ten gallon water to five gallon bucket, it don't work. And so over the years, this thing has been neglected since back in the fifties, and this is the first time anything's been done to it. And the county's been over there this past week putting in new drainage pipes and flows to make this thing flow better and trying to get all this cleaned out, and it has really been a problem, dealing with F dot and strictly with VMS who is, do, do, anyone know who VMS is? Virginia Maintenance Service?
Yeah.
They have really been a problem to deal with, because they say they don't have the equipment, they don't have the money to do it. And the sad part is Indian River County is one of the counties in the state of Florida that is contracted out to VMS to do the work. And when you go to F dot in Fort Pierce and talk to those people, they don't have the money to do it, it's all done through VMS. And over the years, all this has been neglected, and all of a sudden, when we got the storms and everything, everything backed up, then we got a flood problem. Only cleaning all of this out, even from Seventeenth Street all the way through, that, that's the thing that's going to keep us from flooding. And in the last city commission meeting that I went to, they were asking for a lot in the post office annex, eighty by a hundred, to put in this pump station where they can put in three huge pumps, these pumps are supposed, supposed to pump something like thirty-three thousand gallons a minute of water flow. And they figured by putting this in and putting this weir system in on, on Indian River Boulevard that'll block the flow of that, as the water comes in, they can pump it back out. And it'll not only keep Rock Ridge from flooding, but also for the post office annex whenever developed that, you know, and, and all through the whole community. And from the things that I have read and been reading and listened to the news, and they're doing this all over South Florida, Big County, down in Miami, they're doing it, even in large canals, to keep that water from coming in, and that way they can pump it back out. But anything y'all can do is planning zone to help us in Rock Ridge, I appreciate it, and all of our members do too. Yeah, and it's, it's an old community, I mean, most of those homes, a lot of those homes were started like in nineteen fifty-eight and fifty-nine, and it's, you know, it's all developed as far, unless you sell a home or tie one down, that's the only way it'll ever come available there, because there's no more access in the build homes, because everything is, is full. And when this was all developed, it was winter homes for people by the north, and it's, it's still, right now we have about twenty-five, I call them snowbears, they're wonderful people, but most of it now is permanent residents that live there. And thank you all for hearing me in, I appreciate it with all my heart, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
Third. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Good.
Okay, looks like Gail is up with three in a row here. The next item up is county initiated request to amend the text to the comprehensive plans future land use element by creating a new mobile, MHRP, mobile home rental park, land use designation for mobile home rental parks. Do you want to do both of these at the same time, or you want to?
In fact, I was going to suggest that, thank you very much.
All right, let me go ahead and read the next one into the record. County initiated request to amend the county's comprehensive plan to redesignate approximately eight hundred and six acres from M one, medium density one, up to eight units per acre, L two, low density two, up to six units per acre, and CI, commercial industrial, to MHRP, mobile home rental park. And both of these items are legislative, the last one was quasi judicial. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. Gail Comney, Long Range Planning Section, before we get started with this particular amendment, I'd like to run through the county plan amendment process itself, just for refresher for you, and, but more importantly, to inform the public. With comprehensive plan amendments, there's no limit to the number of amendments that be submitted per year, but there is a limit to the frequency of amendments per year. Florida statute one sixty-three dictates that there's only two county plan amendments per year from each local government. In our case, county plan amendments are submitted during January and July, and this particular, all the county plan amendments you're going to hear tonight are all submitted in January, initiated at that time. With the, with county plan amendments are submitted to the Community Development Department, staff reviews them for, to make sure they're complete, and then establishes the dates for the public hearings and writes the staff reports to submit the planning zoning and board. There are three public hearings, the first one tonight is before the P and Z, you have opportunity to make a recommendation to the board whether to adopt or deny each of the county plan amendments. At that time, they'll go to, for the second plant, or public hearing before the board, which is a transmittal hearing. And at that time, the board has, makes the decision whether to approve or deny the amendment request, and then transmit that to DCA, or the State Department of Community Affairs. The, the amendment applications are then transmitted to the Department of Community Affairs and seven other agencies for review. Those agencies then write their own recommendations to DCA and send that off to them to complete the review process at DCA. DCA has sixty days to write its objectives, recommendations, and comments report, otherwise known as an ORC, to the county. If there's any issues in that ORC, then the staff has to address those issues and write another staff report to the board to explain that. Then the board, this is the final public hearing, the third public hearing, where the board makes, either adopts or denies the amendments, and then they're sent to DCA for compliance review, and then DCA has forty-five days to send us a notice of intent to let everyone know that they've approved. That brings us back to the first county plan amendment here, we're going to talk about the first two, which is the text amendment and the future land use map amendment for mobile home parks, in particular, creating a land use designation for mobile home rental parks, which allows up to eight units per acre. For a little background here, in October of two thousand and six, the board directed staff to create this new land use designation specifically for rental mobile home parks. The intent was to provide more protection for the renters in those parks from conversion to other residential uses. This is the location of the mobile home parks that we're going to look at, all the parks that we're looking at are all larger than ten acres in size. You can see the largest concentration, or about half of them actually, are in the I-95 State Road sixty corridor area. Some of the others, there's Shady Rest and Beach Cove to the north and to the south end of the county down this way along US one, you've got South Gate, Wood Lawn, Holiday Village, Tanglewood, and Midway Estates. This is a chart that shows all the parks that we're going to be discussing in these, these amendments. I've highlighted a few things here to bring your attention to it, you'll notice that two of the parks actually have a CI land use designation, four of them are an L two or low density residential land use designation, which allows up to six units per acre, the rest are an M one. By the way, these properties represent about eighty-two percent of all the rental mobile home park lots in the county, in the unincorporated county. With this amendment, well, currently, policy, future land use settlement policy one point one four allows mobile home parks only in the M one and M two, that's a medium density residential land use designation, that's the only place they're actually allowed under the county plan right now. And as I mentioned in the chart, you'll see there's four of them that are in L two, and two of the mobile home parks are actually in CI, one is on CG, one is RMH eight, or RMH six, and the rest are all eight units per acre. The nonconformities, the ones that are in the L two and CI were created prior to the current county plan amendment, so these are actually legal nonconforming sites. By revising Future Land Use Amendment Policy one point one four, this will correct all these nonconformities. Mobile home parks have always been a really popular affordable housing option, in particular in Florida, and in Indian River County in particular, there are really two types of mobile home parks, those that are platted and those that are unplatted. parks, those that are platted and those that are unplatted. In the platted mobile home parks, the individuals actually own the lots. Remember a year or so ago, we did rezoning on some mobile home parks up in the north end of the county. All those were individually owned lots and all the owners got together and agreed on the rezoning. With the unplatted lots, the individuals rent. And therefore, if the owner of the park should decide to change the zoning for any reason, the people that live there don't really have that much input into the process. Typically, a rezoning application would can be completed in three to four months if there's no concurrency issues. With this new land use designation, the park owner would have to go through the entire comp plan amendment process to have, to change the land use designation from the RMH RP that we're suggesting to another land use designation. That would take about nine to ten months. This whole process would, for the renters that are living in those parks right now, more time to find alternative housing options and also give an opportunity to participate in the amendment process. This being a legislative matter, by changing a land use designation is actually a legislative matter and provides the board more discretion in the final outcome. By revising Future Land Use Amendment Policy 1.2, this would recognize the new land use designation on the future, on the future land use map. And creating, excuse me, creating policies, the new policies, 1.41.1 and 1.41.2 would define the location of this new mobile home designation, the maximum density allowed uses in this land use designation. With all comp plan amendments, we have to look at the following criteria, especially for land use amendments. Whether it meets concurrency tests, is consistent with our comprehensive plan, the environmental impact of the request and its compatibility with surrounding uses. In this case, the new designation does not create any more density or intensity. There's no rezoning request, so it's exempt from the concurrency review. As for environmental impact, it's the same conditions. There's no change under the proposed or the existing land use designations and no change in compatibility with surrounding uses. Also, in order to change the text in the comp or any of the comp plan criteria, we have to look at policy 14.3. There's four criteria there. One of those need to be met for us to go ahead with a comp plan amendment. That's the mistake in the approved plan or to correct an oversight, improve plan, a substantial change in circumstances, or swap or reconfiguration of land use designations. This particular amendment meets, or both these amendments meets, the second and third criteria. That's to correct the oversight of the nonconformities, the six mobile home parks that I mentioned before, that are actually on a land use designation that's not currently allowed or does not allow for the mobile home parks. So we'd fix those nonconformities. Also, there's been a substantial change in housing and land values over the last few years, which leaves few affordable housing options available, particularly to these people that already invested in these mobile home parks and been there for some time. The new designation would allow for mobile home rental parks only, up to eight units per acre. It would provide some additional protection to those residents from conversion to other residential uses and the designation does not create any more density or intensity. Therefore, staff is recommended to the planning zoning to recommend to the board to adopt a proposed comp plan text amendment and land use amendment in revising these policies and creating the new policies, 1.14.1 and 1.14.2. I'm glad to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I have. I'm out.
Okay. Back there, you said it was going to be allowed for mobile rentals only.
Rentals only. If you'll notice in that table, I can back up to the table if you need. We selected only those mobile home parks that are over ten acres in size.
Right.
And all of those are rental mobile home parks, unplatted mobile home parks.
Okay. So there won't be a mix of owner slash rental.
No, sir. These are all unplatted, right?
That's great.
Yes, sir.
Do I... Are you changing certain designations from eight units, six units per acre to eight units per acre and others from ten to eight?
No, it's just establishing a maximum density, eight units per acre. Most of these...
But some are six now and others are...
Some are six, right. It's just like with M1 or M2, you know, you can have up to eight units per acre or under M2 land use designation, you have up to ten units per acre, but you can have, you know, any zoning district under there.
Right. But what you're changing is up to six to up to eight and then couple up to ten, down to up to eight.
No, we're not changing, we're not changing the zoning. All we're doing is establishing a new land use designation that maxes at eight units per acre.
Well, I think, I think, Gail, we've got, we've got two parks in the L2 area, which is a land use designation that allows up to six units per acre. But one of those is zoned at eight units per acre anyhow.
Most of them are.
Yeah. So really, this isn't giving any more entitlements. It's just really reflecting what the zoning is and as Gail said, some of these are nonconforming with the existing land use designation.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Yeah, they shouldn't have been in the L2.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question. Why did you limit this to ten acres and more?
Those that are less than ten acres, you know, you can do a small-scale amendment and that's just basically like a rezoning. It only takes three to four months to do a rezoning, or excuse me, do a small-scale amendment. Because small-scale land use amendments are for those parcels or properties that are less than ten acres in size. So it was really a moot point, we thought, to try to do anything with less than ten acres because regardless, you could, you could change those. That's, that's the way the state statute reads.
That's not real... I don't understand that.
Essentially, what we're looking at here is the time involved really gives protection to people.
Correct.
Gail said nine or ten months, but that's if you walk in at the perfect time. If you come in today, it's going to be a year and a quarter because the timeframe won't start until the end of, end of July.
Right.
So, and what Gail's saying, and you've seen this before, if a property is under ten acres, we can do a small-scale land use amendment in the same timeframe as a rezoning.
We've done two of those.
It's not limited to twice a year. It can be done anytime. Yes, it can be done anytime and can be done with fewer procedural requirements.
Yes.
So really what this is saying is that it's really not protecting those people that are renting in the smaller parks.
Yeah, and another reason we did that is it's just becomes an administrative nightmare if we have very, very, very small areas on the land use map trying to designate it as a different color. And we did talk, we talked to the chairman of the county commission, who was the initiator of this and got the other, the rest of the commission to, really enthusiastically buy into it. And he agreed that, that it still met his intent with even leaving out the rural small ones.
Well, Mr. Wheeler's intent is, actually, the motion that county commissioners made was to direct staff to change the land use designation of all existing mobile home rental parks. The ones that are under, are ten acres and under actually comprise four-hundred-and-seventy-eight units. And the state Florida Mobile Home Act, the statute for the state of Florida applies to parks ten units or more. So why don't we just make it easy, follow suit with the state, include those parks in here that have ten units or more instead of having to go in and do an individual change? Why don't we just incorporate this all in one shot? I mean, that...
Like I said, it's an administrative nightmare having all these little spots on a land use map is one thing.
But you're saying you're going to change them anyway on an individual basis?
No, no, no. We said that if we changed them today, they could change them back in only the time it would take to do a rezoning.
Because they're small scale.
That it really, like Gail said, it wouldn't provide any additional protection.
Then maybe we need to look at this in a different light than if it's not protecting the people that, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight units. If we're making this change just to give people more notice that their mobile home park is being, the use is being changed from a mobile home park to something else. All right. The reason we're doing this is because people only have, how much notice do they have now if somebody wants to evict?
They have sixty days notice by statute. I'm sorry, six months notice by statute.
Okay. So what we're doing is we're making this change so that a person who owns the mobile home park will have to go through a process that's going to take about a year or eighteen months to do. All right? There's nothing to say that they won't be able to make that change though.
No.
Okay. So now you have a mobile home park full of people that are waiting on pins and needles for the mobile home park owner to go through the process of a comp plan change. So after they get, after the mobile home park owner goes through eighteen months of this process, the people who live in the park still only have six months. So they've been waiting eighteen months for this, this mobile home park owner to go through the process and now they still only have six months' notice. Instead of doing it this way, why don't we just make a law in the unincorporated area that any eviction due to land use change or to some change in the park, mandatory twenty-four months' notice?
You're stepping into the state's shoes there.
Yes. Asset stands now, Ms. Keys, if a, if a mobile home rental park owner wants to change the park and evict the residents, all that park owner has to do is file notice with the trailer owners or the mobile home owners and proceed with the zoning change if necessary. In some instances, as we can see here, a zoning change might not be necessary and those are the easy ones for the home, for the landowners to do. If the zoning is already favorable and it's been approved, you must just evict the existing mobile home owners, pay them the sum of twenty-seven fifty or thirty-two fifty, depending on the size of their home, and in six months, they must be out.
And this bill lengthens the period because it forces the comprehensive plan amendment change?
Yes. It increases the amount of scrutiny that would be given to a proposed change in a mobile home park.
But once the change is made, if that, if that change is approved, then the mobile home park owner, mobile home park residents still only have six months' notice.
That's correct.
Let me make a couple of other points. One thing I try not to do during the legislation, during the legislative session, is look at legislation, but sometimes it just comes up and bites me and I can't help it. And there is legislation right now up there to require local governments, if they change the land use and zoning for mobile home parks, to provide a significant amount of money to each tenant so that they recoup all of the costs of moving. It's one bill, I'm paraphrasing, I didn't look at it closely like I don't look at any legislation closely during the session. But, but so this is on the legislature's radar screen too, that's being done. And just another thing to say, you know, every landowner in the county has rights. Every landowner has the right to petition the county to change his land use. That's what we see sometimes. A lot of times we come to you with changes that we don't think are good ideas at all. But people do have that right and we're trying to, we're trying to work within a system and structure a mechanism that at least affords some protection where there's almost none right now. It's not, it's not a perfect solution, but it's probably, I think, one of the best that we have available.
You did say that the county paid each unit owner. You meant the park owner?
No.
The county?
No. This is, I don't know if you happened to read that?
Yes, I did. And again, it's, it's proposed.
Right, right.
It's proposed. Along with that same proposal, I think the bill also provided for waiving of impact fees to attract new teachers and sundyet and things. Early bills in the legislature are often weak lists.
Right. And I can tell you, and from what I read, there are several jurisdictions, and these are cities in South Florida that have a third to a half of their, their population in mobile home parks and some of them are looking at redevelopment and revitalization. And actually, that's one of the things with some of the smaller parks, it isn't always in the best interest of everyone to keep some of these uses. You know, if it's a small park, if it's in the middle of a bunch of different uses, if the homes have deteriorated, if it's blighted, you know, sometimes it's better if it does go.
Stan, let's go back to this ten acres, I mean, Bob, let's go back to the ten acres. The, what do you call the special provision they have? What do you label it?
Small-scale amendment.
Small-scale amendment. Is this in law or county ordinance? State law or county?
It's state law.
So there's no working around that? Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion up here? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak? Go ahead. State your... We have two podiums here. Why don't you come up and get ready at this podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Bob Neese. I live at 7,020th Street, number eight sixty-one on Vero Beach. That's the Village Green manufactured homeowner or manufactured home development. Before I get into what I was going to talk about tonight, I'd like to address, Ms. Keys, when you were talking about, after, if this is approved, then it goes through the same process again to be changed. It's my belief that if this happens, right now, we're looking for approval of this to give us a little bit of protection, more than we've ever had. If this comes up again in the future, a developer wants to come in or somebody wants to come in and have the zoning laws changed, then they have to go through the same process as we're going through now. And it's possible that this could be approved. It's also possible that it could not be approved. And it's our hope that it would not be approved. So that would afford us even more protection. And we're not looking at this coming into being now and then somewhere down the line that it's changed in three or four or five more years, back to the, where it can be developed. So I don't know if that...
You do understand that if the developer does get the approval though?
Yes.
To do the change?
Yes, ma'am.
You only have six months' notice?
That's it. But we're also on the impression that the developer is going to go through the same process and somewhere in that process, this could be denied and we're hoping that we could be part of that denial.
Will it, will it at least be extended? It'll take longer.
It gives, it gives...
It'll give you more exposure time to convince someone to go one way or the other.
Yes, that's it.
Your exposure time to influence it will be longer, but that's about all.
Whatever time we can buy or whatever time we can be given, we're very appreciative.
Sure.
Okay, just, that was a sidelake. Bob Bauer should be speaking to you tonight. He is the one that spearheaded this event. Bob had recent eye surgery and he's still in the recovery process, so he asked me to sort of step in for him. Back in the late summer, August, September, so we were looking at what is happening in mobile home parks in the state of Florida and a lot of people are losing their homes. Indian River County is a very diverse county in terms of a way of life. There are many lifestyles throughout this county. And the people that live or reside in the mobile home parks are part of this lifestyle. And a lot of, a lot of these people are losing their lifestyles because of developers or whatever, coming in and buying the land and having the land use change where they can put in high rises, condominiums, villas, you name it whatever, and obviously make a lot more money than collecting rent from a manufactured home. We really didn't have too much protection and we're not in the situation of Ronnie Breezes down there in Palm Beach where, yeah, we could all become instant millionaires if we sold a park. So that was sort of out of the question. Bob Bauer and myself and Bobby Sisser and Elaine Kane, we're all from Village Green. We got together and we were trying to figure out, you know, what can we do or what can somebody do to help protect us, help protect our lifestyle? And we thought about, you know, maybe the law can help us, maybe the county commission, somebody. And not doing it alone, we invited a couple of the residents of the other, representatives of the other manufactured home parks out in the western part of the county out there off of Route sixty in the I-95 section. And I guess about four or five parks, we attended a meeting and the ideas were all the same. And the presumption was let's try to preserve our lifestyle. And it just started to snowball and we had another meeting and we involved as many manufactured home parks in the county as we could. We just simply went door to door, if you want to say. door, if you want to say, you know, the term used, and approached all of these people, and we had a, a meeting in which most of the manufactured home, uh, uh, parks were represented in Village Green, and the thought was the same, we all want to be able to live here in Indian River County and enjoy this diverse, uh, way of life. Uh, as it stood, uh, Mr. Crammer, uh, mentioned some figures, eighty-two percent of the manufactured home parks are represented in this, uh, proposed amendment, uh, change, or proposed, uh, land use change. Uh, the eighty-two percent, we were able to garner about eighty-eight percent of that, and we're looking at maybe, um, thirty-eight hundred units and close to six thousand, uh, homeowners that were involved with this, and that was all done within a month, four weeks or six weeks, so there's quite a bit of interest in this. And, uh, Mr. Uh, Dower contacted Gary Wheeler, Commissioner Wheeler of the County Commission, and asked what could be done, and we've met with him, uh, a few times, and this is the product of all those meetings and all the work that, uh, the commissioners have done. Uh, Mr. Keating has been working with us, and I'd like to thank all of them, and Mr. Crammer, uh, Crammer, uh, I didn't realize what was involved until I sat here tonight and saw this, you know, it's just, it's absolutely amazing, we thank you for it, appreciate all the time. Uh, anyhow, uh, we're in a situation, and from your discussions and your questions, you all realize what kind of situation it is, uh, we have chosen this lifestyle, and we enjoy this lifestyle. We know there's change in Indian River County, we know there's going to be growth in Indian River County. We would like to be here to enjoy that change and enjoy that growth, that's, that's what we want, and we're asking that, uh, you give us, you give us this opportunity. Uh, you know, I'm, again, I'm amazed at what you, what you people go through, and I really appreciate everything you've done, and, uh, we're just asking that you will, uh, give us your support and, uh, give us your approval for this, uh, proposed amendments by the county commissioners, and, uh, you know, that gives us a little more time, and any little ti-, any amount of time that we can get to protect our lifestyle, we're, we're willing to take that, and if something comes up in the future, uh, we'll be back again, and, uh, we do represent a tremendous amount of people here in the county, and it was amazing how everybody came together, and just, uh, there was virtually one-hundred percent agreement every time we met, and, uh, you know, we do, again, appreciate everything you've done, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ralph Machnik, I'm the owner of a rental and mobile home park, and, uh, being a, uh, in the mobile home business for forty years, uh, I don't know if you guys realize, there's a big change in the mobile home businesses because a lot of the people have been in the mobile home business for many, many years, the home has been deteriorated, uh, I try to keep up my park up to date, uh, the vacancy factor in most of the parks are about over twenty percent, whether it's Village Green, or mine, or anybody else. Uh, we've been trying to sell some homes over the past two years to people, and we advertise, and it's impossible, because people do not want to live in mobile home anymore. So yes, you do have the people that live in the mobile home today, and I'm not closing my park, I don't have no intention of closing my park, I'm a developer, I'm not having intention to develop it in the future, but it's not like it used to be in the past, and I own mobile home parks all the way from Vero Beach to Key West. And, uh, it's, it's, if you guys will say, okay, uh, there is a new name to mobile home, which they call modular homes today, it's the same like saying, well, it's not a used car, it's a pre-owned car. Well, then we don't have no problem anymore, if we come in front of you guys and say, listen, hey, I'm going to replace my home with a, uh, a modular home, then there's no problem selling it, because it's, it's, the people are, I don't know why, but they, they like the word modular home, it's the same thing if you go to Ocala where we build, and we call the home stick home, well, it's, stick home is a frame home, it's not really a frame home, I mean, it's not really a stick home, what's a stick home? And, uh, but to say that for the people, that you're going to protect their lifestyle, the people are in my park, for example, when they reach a certain age, or they get sick, all of a sudden they say, okay, goodbye, here is my home, and they disappear on me, then I have to demolish it and keep it vacant, the lot. And even so, we bring some homes and we advertise, it's impossible to sell, and I will tell you this much, that I'm the cheapest one in this, in Indian River that's selling homes. My brand-new homes today are selling for fifty thousand dollars, where Village Green is selling for a hundred and fifty thousand, the same identical home from the same manufacturer, because we build dealers, I'm a dealer, I'm a manufactured mobile home dealer, and I can't sell my homes, and I'm a big taxpayer, where all the other people are just paying twenty-three dollars, or forty-three dollars. So I leave it in your hand, and you guys evaluate it, whether you want the tax dollars to come in to support Indian River, or do whatever you want to do. I, I don't have no objection to either one, but I think if you're going to go with a, a change to mobile home rental, you should put modular homes next to it, so when we have to change a home, we don't have no problem. Now, modular home, I don't know if too many people know, but you can build it any size and any shape and any way you want to, the same thing as a mobile home, and it's on wheels. So if you will put modular home next to it, I don't have no problem with it, and I'll keep my park, I don't have no problem with it. I thank you very much.
What's your response to that, Bob?
Anybody have, anybody have any questions? I'll be more than happy to.
That's something we can look into, we, we have kicked it around, the difference is, a mobile home is certified by HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level, it's built in a factory, certified by HUD, and comes here. A modular home is certified by the Department of Community Affairs, it's built to the Florida Building Code, it's built in a factory, but it's built to the Florida, uh, Building Code. But historically, and one of the things we do, we allow, we treat modular homes just like stick-built housing. Any subdivision in the county, from the county standpoint, probably not deed restrictions in some of them, but from a county standpoint, in any subdivision, you can go out there and put a modular unit in, you cannot put a mobile home in. So we, we, we historically have treated modular units just like stick-built housing, and we've always kept modulos, modders and stick-built, we've kept separated from mobile, because generally there's been more of a friction, and I think people in subdivisions don't want mobile homes coming in their subdivision and being put there, and i- if, if we treated them the same, you know, if we said in essence modders and mobiles are the same, would, would be in that predicament, but what we can do is, we, we can look at maybe allowing modular homes in mobile home parks, it, it is an alternative, we have to look at it and see what the repercussions are.
Present, you do not.
Present, we do not.
I'd like to add up something, the modular home is built in the same factory, with the, by the same people, by the same, I mean, with the same engineers, and you can call Skyline, Fleetwood, Palm Harbor, whoever you call, and you say, listen, I'd like to see a modular home, or I want to see a mobile home, sometimes I get confused, I don't know which side it is even built, but it's built the same way, and, uh, to say that a modular home is different than a mobile home is absolutely wrong, it's the same thing, it's coming on wheels, it's, uh, controlled by the Department of Transportation.
Modular home doesn't come on wheels.
Yes, it does, yes, it does, yes, it does.
Seriously?
I've been in it for forty years, I wouldn't tell you something, it's not so.
I, I, I think it's not one size fits all, you know, you have different types of, of modulas, but they're going to be delivered to the job site on a truck.
On the wheels, on wheels with a truck.
But it's put on a slab, or the home doesn't have wheels?
It's, you can put modular homes on the frame, which is a steel frame, which is a I-beam, what we call an I-beam, which is essentially is a mobile home, some places will require you to put a slab, some places not, but it is, and I welcome you to go and visit the factory, and I'll make an appointment for you. It's built the same identical, if you ask the employees in the factory, how is it built? It's, there's no difference between one or the other, it's just that they gave it a different name, and it comes with the same truck that you're towing up the mobile home is towing up the modular, and sometimes you can see it on the highway, and you can't even tell the difference. I'm involved right now in the Keys, and in the Keys, for example, we have what we call a Zone Three Exposure B, which is, uh, a hundred and seventy-five miles an hour homes. I bring mobile homes, I bring modular homes, the county can't even tell which one is which.
I don't see any problem with doing, putting modular homes in, in mobile home parks, I, I, I think it's actually better because...
It's safer, it's a lot more safer.
Bob, what, what type of change would that be, it's certainly not a comprehensive...
No, it's, no, they are change, we can, like I said, we can look at it, I can't tell you right now what the ramifications are, particularly if we start putting slabs down, we do zoning and setbacks different in mobile homes, there are no lots in mobile homes, that, any, when you see a depiction of lots in mobile home parks, those are imaginary lines, a surveyor cannot go out there and identify corners and, and actually come up, so, I mean, we still have...
There are some issues.
Yeah, there, there are some issues, and we just need to look at it, it's a separate issue, yeah.
Not really, because, and I can give you an example from my...
You've already won.
In my mobile home in here...
You're talking past the sale.
Yeah, you, you've won your point.
Okay.
Uh, I just had one little question, is, uh, there's a license plate put on mobile, what about the, the other modular?
Actually, nothing is, is specific yes or no, it, it, as I understand it, mobile homes can be a couple of different ways, if they are attached to the ground and associated with real property, they can be, they don't need a license plate, and they can be taxed like a home is. Uh, in other instances, and in, I think, most if not all rental mobile home parks, yeah, they are, they, they pay their money to the tax collector and they do get a license plate, yeah, and I don't, Bill, I don't know if you have anything?
To answer your question, is all mobile home that are tied down have a decal on them, which you buy, which is forty-three dollars or sixty dollars, I don't know, and modular home is the same thing, you buy a decal, and it's longer, so it's the same thing, basically, and this is the answer to it.
Okay. Are there any mobile home parks that don't allow modular homes?
Uh, I really can't answer you this, but if, if you go to the zoning board, and my daughter happened to be an attorney, so I don't have this much of a problem, and she usually does all my work, and, uh, if you present it the proper way, which I'm telling you right now, I don't think the board can deny you. I mean, you do have the board hours long, you do have the owner property rights, and you have to present it the proper way, and then the board will look into it, and they will say, okay, well, it's, if it's the same, it's the same, we have to give it your permission. But it's a matter of, sometimes you want to fight it, sometimes you don't want to fight it.
Okay, point well taken, thank you very much, that'll come up for discussion some other evening.
Okay, anybody else wish, wish to speak?
My name is Robert Hondle, I, uh, live in Village Green, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I just want to make a couple of points. Uh, first, this is a question of semantics, uh, we're not dealing with modular, uh, mobile homes, we're talking about about six thousand people who are, who are at risk, uh, if their property is purchased by some developer, and their home, regardless of what the cost may be, uh, some homes have had tremendous amounts of improvements done to them, far more than the cost of the home, uh, nothing to have twenty thousand dollars put into kitchen, uh, living area in one of these homes. So we're talking about six thousand people who live and are part of this community, uh, who are at risk, and I think, Ms. Keys, your point was very well taken, I think that has to come back at a later discussion on how we take this matter forward. This is a, this is a Band-Aid right now for what we're trying to do to save ourselves. If this is approved by you, and it moves to the next step, and it becomes approved, yes, it will become, uh, more difficult for, uh, a developer, if this gentleman wants to develop his property in some other way, uh, that's his, that's his own decision to do, but what we're trying to do, and what we're asking you to help us, is to consider this, this, uh, amendment, I guess is what it's called, and consider this as the first step in trying to protect six thousand people who are part of this, are part of this community, part of this county. And I don't want to get into any more semantics, other than, this is the point, we don't want to get away from where you're, you're headed, and we hope that you will come to our aid and help this move to another step, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
And thank you, my name is Claire Anahan, I'm a resident at Shady Rest Mobile Home Park in Sebastian, and just reflecting on some of the thoughts you had this evening, approximately a year ago, we were notified our park was up for sale, and was finally taken off the market in November. Well, if you don't think we were walking in yellow for six months, wondering what was going to happen. Uh, if, and you quoted the, uh, figure or the amount of money you would get if you moved a single home, and, and approximately just over two thousand, if you moved a double-wide, it would be three thousand. Lot of the homes in the park are up in age, and if the, uh, home is twenty years of age or over, you cannot get a company that is willing to risk moving it. A couple of the homes that did come in and found out it was for sale, did move, it cost them an additional fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars to move their home out. Now, ones, uh, most people in the park have been there, some of them since the park opened over twenty years ago, so coming in at whatever age, and that now twenty years later, to think of having to move and to get two thousand dollars or approximately for their homes was a pretty scary time, really for all of us, I can see it's off the market now, and we were so happy to hear from Village Green that they were establishing this coalition gathering of mobile homes to try to give us some protection. We felt in our park, if it was sold, hopefully it would be maintained as a park, we would have some place to live. So to repeat the numbers, again, from the various parks, is, uh, it was not an easy six months, and to think, well, you'd have six months to move to where, to affordable housing where, uh, probably get some prices now from other parks, or, you know, but how do you afford that? We have people well into eighties and nineties in the park, they can't afford another home. We're in a great spot, appreciate it, so we really appreciate this opportunity with you this evening, thank you.
Claire, what park are you in?
I'm in Shady Rest. Shady Rest is up on, uh, US one, right next to, uh, Home Depot.
How many units in your park?
A hundred and seventeen, I believe, a hundred and fifteen, and I'm not, uh, they're not all occupied at this time, because we've had a lot of devastation due to the hurricanes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak?
My name's Clay Price. I reside at 1405 46th Avenue of Euro Beach, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the owner of Shady Rest Mobile Home Park. I've also spoken to the other 14 park owners, uh, as it relates to this, this proposed amendment. I've spoken to the county staff and I would like to thank Gail for all of this help and Bob and his staff also. I came to this amendment because of the owner of the, the mobile home park, wanted to know what this was going to do to him. He's not a resident of Indian River County and he's owned the park for quite some time. The question I had was what was this going to do and what was the purpose of it? When I came to, to the planning and zoning department and found out that essentially what this is going to do is prevent, um, a mobile home park from changing from a residential use as a mobile home park to another type of residential use and nothing else, as far as the timeframe, that it would, and as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I need to go back and report to the owners, this only limits what the mobile home park owner can do in far, inasmuch as changing his use right now from a mobile home park to a condominium association or something in a residential use. It does not change his use as it relates to wanting to have his park rezoned for sale into some kind of commercial development. So I need to make sure that I understand this as it's being proposed.
No, that's not correct, Clay.
Okay.
It, it, it would impede the, the change to a commercial use also. Basically, what this is doing is it, it is establishing a new land use designation that essentially allows only one type of use, mobile home rental park. Whereas currently, mobile home rental parks are zoned generally RMH 8 and they're in the medium density residential land use designation that would allow mobile home parks, multifamily housing, or single family housing. What this does, like I said, it's going to create a land use designation that is unique to mobile home parks and make it more difficult to, for a mobile home park owner to change, to, to be able to do any other use on there but mobile homes. But it
One, there were, I believe, two properties on there that were designated commercial. What does that do to those properties?
It, it's, it's going to change their land use designation from CI, Commercial Industrial, to a mobile home rental park.
It, it will make it more difficult, it just require that the land use designation be changed.
Right.
Which means you have to go through a certain procedure.
Right.
But they'll be entitled to go through that procedure.
Correct. It's going to make it just more difficult in terms of time, time consuming. Yes.
In this case, Bob, the, the mobile homeowner, if this passes through the commission, will have input if a request for a zoning change occurs after this is, is approved by the commission. Whereas if it is not, the mobile home owner would not have an input to the zoning change requested by the owner of the park.
Really, they would have input either way, but there'll be more entrances into the system this way.
More exposure time.
Yes, yes. More time and more public hearings, more opportunities to participate, yeah.
I'm not sure I understand then. As I understand it, we'll take Shady Rest and Tanglewood as two parks and they're a little different in that Shady Rest is owned by, uh, a single owner and Tanglewood is owned by a co-op of owners. In Tanglewood, where this project is, is surrounded on all sides essentially by commercial development, and the same thing with Shady Rest, northeast, south and west, we have commercial development on these things. If the parks wanted to change to commercial use, how would this change, this proposal, change what they would currently have to go through to change it to commercial use if that was, uh, the intent of an owner or a developer?
This isn't going to change it at all.
So it does not offer any further protection to the mobile home park resident if they wanted to change their use to be in conformity with the result, the surrounding land use. If every other piece of property around these parks are zoned commercial, except these parks, this doesn't change the protection for the owners then, or, excuse me, the, the residents.
It doesn't change it if you, it, it doesn't change it if the objective of the park owner is to go to a different land use designation. Here you've got, this is designated L2. As it is currently, with just a rezoning, you could come in and put condos there. With just a rezoning, you could come in and do a single family subdivision. But if you want to do commercial there, you would have to come in for a land use change, which is the very same thing you would have to do in the future if this change goes through.
So from that standpoint, if they wanted to change from a residential type of use to a commercial use, there's no change or no benefit to the tenants of the mobile home park?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
For those two.
For those two.
For these two. For these two, what I'm not sure I understand then, these two parks are completely surrounded by commercial development and industrial development. And if I understood what was presented earlier this evening, that there was, that this was going to fix consistency problems for the county and that there were going to be no compatibility problems by doing this. These two parks, as I understand it, are zoned Commercial Industrial. They're currently surrounded by Commercial Industrial property. They're operating as mobile home parks, but this would change this and they would lose their Commercial Industrial in general, um, their general commercial use.
Yeah, let me correct you. Well, these are both designated Commercial Industrial on the comp plan.
Mm-hmm.
Woodland O is zoned Mobile Home Park, is zoned RMH 6. South Gate is not only designated Commercial Industrial on the comp plan, it's zoned Commercial. So, so you have the same land use, same Commercial Industrial land use designation for both, but one of them has a mobile home zoning and the other has a commercial zoning.
But as I understand what you're doing is you would be taking the Commercial Industrial's land use away from both of those.
You're, you're correct, you're correct.
And what you've stated is that there would, that you're fixing a consistency problem, but in fact, you're actually creating a problem. Because now we have residential mobile home parks that are being rezoned from commercial and now in the middle of a commercial district, and now you're creating a residential.
No, and we're not creating a problem, but we, we have, what we have is, we have a use that maybe is not the use that we would recommend today if we're dealing with a clean slate, but we have a use that is functioning right now in a certain way. We have a mobile home park use and right now it's non-conforming, given the zoning and the land use designation. With this change, it, they will be conforming.
For their current use, but if these individuals wanted to change, you've now placed a burden of cost on them if they ever wanted to change, over and above what they would currently have, and a timeframe that would change and incur significant cost to an individual who owns the property.
Yes.
Yep.
And so, okay. And one of the concerns that I've had in, in looking at these, at 10 acres, your parks that, the 14 parks that are here, they range from 10.29 acres to 174, 175 acres. What would be the harm or problem of changing this from 10 acres to 20 acres?
It, it's a policy decision. It's, it's, if the objective is to provide protection for as many people as possible, lowering the threshold wouldn't, wouldn't achieve that objective.
Well, I think also that 10 acres is kind of like a magic number.
Right, with the, uh, small scale amendment.
Right.
Yeah.
It's tied into the spreads already.
Yeah.
But that's administrative and that's pulling a number out of the air as far as whether it's two acres is, or one of the smaller parks that Ms. Keys was asking about, or 20 acres. You, you use something administrative, what's in it? Other than that, what's the rationale?
The rationale?
These other, excuse me, these other parks, the parks that are less than 20 acres, the maximum number of residents that any of the, or mobile home units in any of these is 128. So the others have significantly more. Village Green has 100 and, or 780 units, mobile home units in there. So we're not talking about a significant number in that regard. So what would be the change of making it 20 as opposed to 10?
As was stated previously, the rationale for the 10 acres is that if a property is under 10 acres, they can come in with a small land comp change, comp plan change amendment, and it can go through as quickly as a rezoning amendment. So it'd be rather futile to extend this down to the smaller acreages and the policy behind it is just that. The 10 acre cutoff is already established by law. It's been long accepted, it's been long practiced, and so that was the reason that the 10 acres was used.
I understand, but we're creating something brand new here.
Yes, based on existing things. It wasn't a figure that was pulled out of the air.
And having said that, is there anywhere else in the state that has this designation for mobile home parks?
Not to my knowledge. St. Lucie County has expressed interest in watching this, as well as other counties have.
So there, Indian River County is proposing something that's not out there for any other mobile home community within the state of Florida.
No, that's, I didn't say that.
Thank you.
I, I, I think that there probably are jurisdictions in the state that have land use categories that are just mobile home oriented. And this isn't, um, I don't think this is unique, what we're doing here.
Aren't you going, Bob, for a hodgepodge to some consistency in, uh, land use designation?
That's the intent.
Yes.
That's the idea.
Yeah, we're, we're going from a land use designation that allows a variety of housing types, mobile home, multifamily, and single family. And we are, in this case, we're, we're creating a land use designation that allows only mobile homes, rental mobile homes.
As a taxpayer resident of Indian River County, then I have one last question. Were you to change the zoning on two of these parks from their current zoning, which allows Commercial and Industrial, and where the one park is already zoned on a commercial basis, do we have the potential of being sued for a loss of rights and land use and property rights by doing that? And what would be the status of that if it were to happen?
The suit would probably come under Chapter 70, Burt Harris Act. But the certain language in there that gives me some comfort into the action would be that it's a vested right to a specific use and an existing use. What we have in the situations at hand, the existing uses are mobile home parks. They are not industrial, they're not commercial, they're not general commercial. So if someone would, if someone would want to sue us, they certainly could. Would they be able to prevail? They'd have to come, they'd have to show that it's an existing use and that the existing use of the real property is a vested right to a specific use with respect to the real property as a whole. I think that would be a difficult question to overcome because it's currently not being used as Commercial or Industrial. Thank you.
They still have the opportunity to approach the commission for a change.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Then as I understand it, all this is going to do is make, is if you wanted to change your land use to something other than a residential or a mobile home park, you're going to go through the same hoops that you'd be going through otherwise.
You would, if you'd want to change the land use designation, you would follow the same path.
And it provides no additional, uh, security to the tenants of the mobile home park?
It gives them the extra time and it gives them the extra entry points.
The time that you're considering or discussing, I'm not sure I follow that. Because if they're going to go through, and I was listening to the, the parts about the timeframe, if they were going to change it from residential to commercial, they're looking at a year to a year and a half, maybe two years to change the zoning, um, for land use and things of that nature. Is that correct?
Far as the land use, a land use plan amendment would take that period of time. Passage of this comprehensive plan change would extend the time period that currently exists only by statute. Right now, if a mobile home park owner wants to evict the tenants and change to an existing use, it's six months and the residents are out.
Right.
This would require the mobile home park owner to go through a longer period, a comp plan amendment, usually taking anywhere from 12 months to 18 months, depending on the timing of the request, and add on top of that, two layers of government review, not only at a local level, but at a state level with the DCA. Then after granting approval of the comp plan change, the six months time period would start by statute.
State statute.
Yes, sir.
These people still wouldn't be able to sell their home during that time period because nobody in their right mind would buy it. And they're still only going to have six months' notice in the end.
Well, they have, they have a lead time before the six months' notice comes up.
To do what?
To plan an exit.
Ms. Keys, you, you've, you've hit the nail right on the head and that's the, that's a creature of the state statute. And a local level, it'd be very difficult for us to fix. This, the legislature has, has said, you know, this is the law. If, evidently, they deem it's okay to basically evict people that have been long-term residents in a lower income type of, you know, lifestyle and force them to try and move a mobile home that hasn't been moved in 20 years to another location. And it's very difficult. We ran into the same problem with moving mobile homes from county to county after the hurricanes, that some of them just can't be moved because of the points that the one gentleman made.
Yeah.
If they have screen rooms and garages and everything else, it's not worth moving it.
Oh, I understand that. And the state statute actually says that a mobile home owner may abandon the mobile home, in the mobile home park and collect thirteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for a single and twenty-seven fifty for a double. Now, we know that a lot of people are going to have to abandon those homes because they cannot be moved, but they're only going to be given six months' notice. This doesn't protect them. Now, are you saying that the state says that we can't force a mobile home park owner to give more than six months' notice?
Correct.
That's the short answer.
Palm Beach, right, Palm Beach, no, there's a judge in Palm Beach that just gave eighteen months on, on one of the mobile homes, parks down there. Um, I, I really would, I'd like to, to look at that a little bit further. I, I, I don't think this, as the gentleman called it, this Band-Aid, is really going to do very much.
We did this dance with the city of Rio Beach, with the Dodger Town, uh, out here.
Yeah.
Uh, when we, when the Dodgers decided to sell that to a developer, the people in that, that mobile home park had six months to jump, you know, find out which way to jump. And we went through the same dance. It took us about almost a year to get it settled, but there's, it's very clear state law. The state will give the property owner the option to sell his property, it's like you, you have the right to sell your home, above the rights of a renter to stay there. And that's the short, that's the short version of it.
Now, if a developer came in and said, Mr. and Mrs. Mobile Home Unit Owner, we're going to change the use of this mobile home park and we're going to change the use of this mobile home park, and we're going to have to go through a site plan approval, we're going to have to go through, what, a year and a half before they can even break ground," right? So, you would have 18 months' notice in that instance, whereas in the instance they're talking about, they're only talking six months' notice.
This would really be a two-year period of time, would it not?
Yeah.
That they know that they're going to be moved.
Generally, I think we are. I mean, we're making some assumptions. We're making the assumption that the mobile home park owner will be looking at this from a financial standpoint and won't evict everyone at the beginning of the process and wait till the end. And if we're correct with our assumption, yeah, it's going to be at least a year plus the six months and probably even more. So, you know, what we're dealing with is what we deal with a lot in planning. We're correcting problems that occurred a long time ago. Currently, in Inyo River County, someone cannot establish a rental mobile home park the way they are now. Mobile home parks need to be platted. Individual lots need to be created, and probably in those cases, the individual lots are going to be sold since they're created. So, we're not, we're not letting this problem occur in the future, and we haven't for a number of years. We haven't, when was the last time we had a new mobile home park?
Rental.
Probably not in the times we've been here, and that's 24 years. So, but we still have to, like everything, we have to deal with what was done 30 years ago.
Now, what's your, I don't understand your 18 months, six months. Are you, what are you saying?
All right, let's say, let's say the owner of ABC Mobile Home Park has a commercial land-use designation. He's going to, if he wants to sell, and if he wants to create a commercial park, he's going to be, he's going to have to tell the mobile home unit owners that, right now, he only has to give them six months' notice. But if there's something that we could do, like that says, you know, when you apply for a site plan, or that has to give them more notice, because you know how somebody comes to us and with a site plan, well, they've gone through a technical review committee, they've gone through all this stuff, you know, it's going to take them 18 months from the first, you know, TRC meeting to the time they're actually going to get their land development permit. That gives, that would give a mobile home unit owner more time to plan.
But now they're going to have to file for a comprehensive plan amendment.
Well, there's 478 that aren't going to have to because, there's 478 people that, units that aren't going to have to because we're breaking it at 10.
The 10-acre?
Yeah, that.
Well, I don't think there's anything we can do about that.
Well, I think there is something we can do, because if they have to file for a rezoning, they're still going to have more time than if they...
Well, they do need to file for a rezoning. I mean, all the, all the mobile home parks, with the exception of Southgate, are zoned for just mobile homes. So, they have, if they want to change to condos, they have to rezone it to RM6 or something.
Okay, let's say we're looking at...
I can tell you, Southgate right now could give everyone eviction notices and then, and come in here with a retail site plan application.
Right, because they're zoned, their land use is CI and their zoning is CG. They could do it tomorrow.
Right.
And maybe they better before this goes through. I just don't think this gives protection to the mobile home.
I agree. Ms. Keys is right. It's a patchwork, but it's the only patchwork we can do right now. I just don't see another option, because it is a state, we're stepping on state toes if you want to start changing the six years, the six months. I can tell you that for sure. I went through that dance.
Okay, Shady Rest, land use is L2, zoning is RMH8. Could they come in right now and change to a condo complex?
They'd have to get it rezoned to RM6. And, and if they got it rezoned, yeah, they go through the site plan process and that's it?
I think, Ms. Keys, the nice mobile home park owner would recognize that this process is going to take a long time and be generous with the residents and allow them to stay past the six months. Does he have to be nice? No, he doesn't have to be nice.
It's in his economic interest to leave it alone.
It's in the economic interest of a property owner to seek the highest and best use.
Of course. But it's not our responsibility to see that it is.
While that's said, they're always going to try, a developer or an owner's going to try and maximize their income and their cash flow. If you go through with two of these parks and change their zoning, that's problematic. And so, you know, it's not that any of these owners, any of the 14 are going to change the use of their mobile home park, but it certainly limits and costs them more money by an administrative action that provides no additional savior to the tenants of the mobile home park. From what I'm hearing, this doesn't provide any real benefit to the tenant of a mobile home park at all. It sounds great politically, we've done something, but if they want to go through and change to a condominium complex, they go through the same process. If they want to change to a commercial project, other than the one park that's already got all of that zoning taken care of, they go through the same process. This doesn't sound like it provides the tenants anything, but it sure sounds great politically. And it took me a while to get along with that.
There's politics involved in this.
Took me a while to get up my hands around that and try and explain it to some people that don't live in this community.
Have you finished?
I am. Thank you for your time, folks.
This is, still a public hearing. We have one other person here.
How you doing? I'm A.J. Walden. I guess I am Southgate, so I've got the most to lose in this thing. Let me just make it clear that we have no intentions on selling or changing the zoning, but apparently you guys are going to do it for us, or try to. And then, if we were to do it, say, in 20 years, we're going to have to try to come back to our original zoning. I just want to just say that I don't like it, but I guess whatever y'all decide, I guess it'll be.
Well, A.J., we'll just be making a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. You'll have another chance to go talk to them. They're the actual legislative body that'll make the decision.
All right. Thanks.
Good to see you. Anyone else?
Bob Neese again. I'd like to speak about the timeframe. We're talking about six months for an eviction. We're talking about 12 months to 18 months if this were to be enacted by the county commissioners through all the legal process and all the public hearings and everything. Right now, basically, we have no say as residents of a mobile home park when it comes to a sale. You're talking six months. If there's an unsolicited or solicited offer to the mobile home park owner, virtually we have to react almost immediately in trying to get everybody within that mobile home park, or as many people in that mobile home park as possible, to put up thousands of dollars to purchase the park. And in that short timeframe, it's virtually impossible. There's a 45-day limit for, I believe, a solicited offer. And again, we have to go through the process as renters of this mobile home park to try to form a corporation or an entity that could purchase this park from the owner. And that, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, it's a lot of work, and it's been done. Midway Estates did it, Tangwood did it. Recently, Harun Kay was involved with this, and, you know, they revised, you know, it's better to just let it be. What this proposal would do for us, in Village Green and all the other manufactured home parks that are represented here and the ones that aren't here, it does give us more time, and it does give us a say. Right now, we have no say at all. At least if this were to be passed and become part of the ordinances for the Inyo River County, we would have a say. I could come here and speak to you as I'm speaking to you tonight. I could go to the county commissioners, their meeting, and speak to them. Right now, we can't do that. So, if this is passed and this becomes part of what we're asking for, then an owner or a developer or someone like that, they're going to have to go through the same process. But at least we can be here to speak to you and tell us, tell you how we feel and give us, give you our viewpoint. Right now, again, we have nothing. And this, as Mr. John Dell said, it's a Band-Aid, but right now, I myself am willing to accept this Band-Aid and just go from there. Because I know if this, if this does happen within the next couple of months, to repeat myself again, I know that I can come back here and then talk to you again, and I can talk to the county commissioners. As it stands now, I can't do that. Thank you.
Could I have one question?
Yes, sir.
On the 88, you said 88% of the 82% were with you. How many of those are below the 10 acres?
How many of those are below the 10 acres?
What percent? Do you have a rough idea?
I really can't. I don't have those figures with me.
Was it significant, or is...
478 units.
Total, but I was wondering how many people were involved in the process?
I don't have that information with me, but it was just amazing how everybody came together in a four- to six-week period, and were able to get together and do this, and we're just asking for your support and hope that you will go along with the commissioners' recommendation and the staff's recommendation that this is accepted. Thank you.
I have one further comment to make, and I know you're tired of listening to this, but the state...
We didn't say that.
Does anybody else from the public wish to speak?
I'm Bobby Sessaire, and I live in Village Green. I just have two very short comments, please. First, the gentleman that spoke from Ranchland, there is not a home for sale in Village Green that is $150,000. There may be people that have ordered a home with special perks of their own choosing that have paid more than $150,000, but the homes that have been brought in, brand-new, ready for purchase, there is not one listed at $150,000. The second thing is, Mr. Fletcher, you mentioned about the purchase of Dodger Pines Country Club and that property. I want to recall to all of you in this room that Safari Pines, those folks were evicted, as you said. The land sits there empty. Nothing has been done. It looks terrible. It's an eyesore, and yet those four folks were evicted. Thank you.
That's not going unnoticed. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing unless somebody else wants to speak on this matter.
The one issue that you were discussing is that the state says you have to give them six months. The state statute says that tenants affected are given at least six months' notice of the projected change of use. That does not keep us from giving a 12- or 24-month requirement. It says at least. It doesn't say maximum six months. If we did that, this would give the mobile home unit owner more protection than a comp plan change.
But we, unfortunately, we can't trump state law in this instance.
We're not trumping state law. It just says, state law says at least, at least six months. Doesn't say that we can't establish higher criteria.
Are there any cases on this?
No.
No cases?
Not at...
New Hampshire requires 18 months. State of Florida, minimum six months. There are other states. The judge in Palm Beach just required 18 months.
It may be, I'd love to take a look at the facts and circumstances, but it is, go ahead, Mr. Chris.
Have you looked to see whether there are any cases, Bill?
I have not looked to see if there are any cases on this issue. I've looked at other cases involving the sale of mobile homes, and, you know, this is...
Did you look into it before the commission meeting? Because if what it says is at least six months, an ordinance that said 12 months would not be in violation of the state law.
Well, we did, we tried that, George, at City of Real Beach, too. I'm telling you, we went through this dance, and it's the state's Rice Bowl. If they wanted it to be 18 months, they would have put it 18 months, and they told us that very clearly. They put it at six months, and they didn't want it at anything else, and they told us that we were outside of our realm.
So, these words, look, all I'm asking is, Bill, look at the case law on the subject.
Very well.
That's relatively poor language from what Ms. Keys read, because we would not be able to change that to three or four or five months.
That's right.
Because of the state law.
That's right.
However, with that poor language, it sounds as though you could change it to 12 if you wanted to.
Well, necessarily, poor language. If you're saying you've got to give six-month notice...
Minimum.
I know, but the way you write it is you give six-month notice. You don't write it, you give at least.
It seems if they intended six months, they would have said six months.
Right, so we can, I think we can establish a higher criteria for our mobile home unit owners.
How would that be handled if we did that, Bob? Would that be an LDR? Or some, it would have to be something else. If it was legal, it'd be an LDR.
Yeah, I think we, we can do, we don't need to have it in the comp plan amendment. We can do it as an LDR.
And this would apply to the 478 people who aren't being protected by this comp plan amendment change?
As well.
Yeah, I guess it would apply to any mobile home park, mobile home, yeah, any mobile home park and any renter in it, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion?
All right. I've got two motions.
Go ahead.
They're identical, that on both these items, we recommend to the county commission the staff recommendations.
Do I have a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye, and we have to state the reason we're opposed. I'm opposed because I don't think it goes far enough.
I would.
I think we all agree with that, Donna.
I'm opposed because I don't think this goes far enough.
And the attorney's office is going to come back, we'll see if we can have any options. Okay, I think we should take a break now for five or 10 minutes.
Did you want to vote on the second measure also?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We said, didn't we?
You voted on one. You held the public hearing on both ones.
They said they were identical.
I made two motions.
Okay.
I hope that was seconded correctly.
VMC.
A second, my second. Second.
Very well.
Okay, let's take a break.
I'd like to make a motion that we send a recommendation up to the Board of County Commissioners that they consider the twenty-four-month notification issued versus the comp plan route.
Do we have any discussion on that? Or would you change that to why rather than? Why not in addition to?
All right, that they consider, all right, change my motion that we send a recommendation up to the Board of County Commissioners that they look at the twenty-four-month notification, possibly in lieu of or in addition to the comp plan change.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Do we want to vote? Go ahead.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And not aye also. So that's unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Was there any opposed?
No. I don't think so. Are you opposed?
No comment.
Okay, we have D here, and it's Gail again. County initiated request to amend the text of the plans. Future land use element by eliminating new town policies 1.34 and 1.35. Gail?
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. Just to give you some background, the reason we're requesting this elimination of those new town policies, remember a couple of years ago, the Metropolitan Planning Organization had a visioning process, and in that visioning process, they brought in community members, the public, to discuss what the future of the county's growth should be like. And out of that process, there was this vision statement that was created to maintain and promote the small-town character of Indian River County as a low-density, low-rise and green county while providing for a variety of housing and transportation choices. That statement has since been implemented into our comp plan. It's in our future land use element under one of the first objectives. At that time, during the visioning process, one of the recommendations that came out of that whole thing was to eliminate the new town policies, which allows for development outside the urban service area, higher development than what the current land use designation would allow. And there was a density bonus of one unit per acre under the new town policies. At that time, the board decided to not eliminate those policies from the comp plan. Instead, they asked staff to review and revise the new town policies and see if we couldn't come up with some better language that would be suitable to all parties. There have been several attempts in the last couple of years to come up with some new language. None of those have been satisfactory, so to date, there's really been no success in revising those policies. Conceptually, the new town policies really provide for a creative development design and allows you to have mixed uses, some commercial office space, and with some traditional neighborhood designs, clustered housing, rather than having it sprawled all out. And it also provides for some preservation of natural areas and rural ag uses and the green belts that would surround the new town concept. The problem has been, and it's stuck in everybody's craw, ever since this has been discussed a couple of years ago, is the density bonus. And with the new town policies I mentioned, you get the one unit per acre instead of following the land use designation that's currently outside the urban service area. In this table here, you'll see the land use designations, Ag 1, 2, and 3, and the total amount of land, this is again outside the urban service area, the acreage for each one of those land use designations, and you're looking at about one hundred and sixty thousand two hundred acres. And the density for each one of those, under the Ag 1, it's one unit per five. Ag 2 is one unit per 10, and Ag 3, one unit per 20 acres. And you can see here the potential number of units under those land use designations. So essentially, you're looking at almost seventeen thousand units if you were to build out the entire ag area outside the urban service area. With the new town policy and a one unit per acre, you're looking at these number of units out there. And you're looking at approximately nine and a half times, almost 10 times as many units outside the urban service area as you would with the current land use designation. Not to mention the fact that if we use the analysis we usually use for concurrency at 2.25 persons per household, you're looking at 360,000 people outside the urban service area. In order to change the comp plan, again, when it will be refined to 14.3, we have to find one of the four criteria that need to be met to approve a comp plan amendment. Either it's a mistake, an oversight, substantial change in circumstances, or swap or reconfiguration of land uses. This particular amendment meets the second criteria. Excuse me, I think we might have jumped ahead on it. This is an oversight in the approved plan. When this was initially approved, the density bonus, when it was established about 16 years ago, the total amount of growth that could be built outside the USA was probably not totally realized. And with all the controversy over these particular policies, and as many times as we've tried, we find it best that this just be taken out completely. So the staff's recommending to the planning and zoning to recommend the board adopt the amendment to eliminate policies 1.34 and 1.35 from the future land use element for new town centers. Glad to answer any questions.
Questions? On the last two items, you went through the steps that you take to get a plan amended, I mean, to get a comprehensive plan changed.
Right.
Is this in the same, no, I don't mean that.
No, excuse me.
The prior, the mobile home park.
Uh-huh.
You educated us on the steps that are taken.
For the comp plan process.
Is this in the same position as those?
Yes, this is a text amendment, so yeah, this goes to the whole nine to 10.
It hasn't been up to the state yet.
No.
Thank you. Any other discussion? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak? State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Mike Ray, and I live at 440 Greystone Court Southwest, and I just had a couple of questions to try and understand this a little bit more. Gail, as I read the proposal, the justification basically for doing this is because of an oversight for a potential, effectively, tenfold increase in density in ag lands. Is that correct?
Yes, the density bonus that's allowed under the new town policies doesn't really fit with the visioning statement that came out of the process a couple of years ago. So the density would be like, well, like I said before, about 10 times what is currently allowed.
That's based on the, based on the table that you just put up?
Correct.
And the math that was used.
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, was there any consideration as to what might be an acceptable density increase if 10 is too much, which I think probably everybody would agree with? Was any consideration given to a fivefold, or a twofold, or a threefold, or anything else besides just a tenfold increase based on what the math would allow?
I think that was considered in the visioning process, and I don't know that any consensus ever came out of it.
Actually, I think that's one of the reasons we're here with the elimination of it, because, as Gail mentioned, there have been several attempts to modify the new town process and retain it, and there hasn't been a meeting of the minds as to what the correct multiple is. In fact, the last process, I think you know, Mike, staff really wasn't involved in, so, you know, we just got reports of it. But I think, I think, I think that's the whole reason that we're here. There hasn't been an acceptable amount of increase that everyone could agree to.
There's also an economic formula there that is never going to make sense at the low end with the developer going in. They're just not going to do it.
I think that's one of the reasons we haven't had any takers in 16 years.
Right.
Because of the criteria for the mixed use, commercial uses and all, providing all the infrastructure, basically self-sustaining village.
Right.
But none of that is included in the justification for extricating this from the comp plan?
I think it all is.
Not in this call room, but I mean, that's been the discussion for the last two years.
No, I understand, but as far as the justification for taking this out, it's purely a density increase.
Yes, that's been a many point.
An over-density increase relative to what's already in there.
Right.
So really, no consideration was given to whether a threefold, or a fourfold, or a fivefold, or a twofold might work if that were possible.
Not in this particular amendment, but like I said, it has been discussed many times, but it just wasn't brought up in this amendment. Has it already been discussed?
Okay. And it's all, all of this basically is very theoretical in nature, as I've been recently told, that this assumes that one equivalent new town or village, in theory, can be created to develop 160,000 units. Correct.
Well, not just one new town, but if the entire area were built with multiple new towns, yeah.
But, but as I understand it, that's not physically possible because there is a distance limitation within 1.34, that if John Doe were to go out west and establish a 5,000-acre new town, then there's some distance restriction that would allow another new town from being developed. So therefore, anything that was within that circle, beyond that limit, would not be able to gain this density bonus. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, there's a separation from new towns. There would be...
Right, but there could be one new town set, according to our current regulations, there could be one new town outside the urban service area, and it could incorporate all of the development rights for all the other property there. And as I was discussing with Mike before, that's not highly probable, but that's the way we do our analysis with a zoning or a land use change. We look at the maximum yield. We look at the worst-case condition, and that's what we did here. Is it probable that that would occur? No. Is it even possible? Not the total yield, because there are houses built on some five-acre and 10-acre parcels out there, but theoretically, you could come close to the 160,000.
But only highly theoretically, I mean, realistically speaking. I mean, would you concede me that?
Highly theoretical, realistically.
You made that.
That would, that would indicate that everybody who owns land that's not already in some ranchette scenario would agree to agree and walk down the aisle together, which is extremely theoretical.
Right.
It'll only happen in Felsner.
I don't think it'll even happen in Felsner. But so based on that, that's why I kind of get back to my question, was there any other, any other consideration given to what might be possible? Because I don't know how much time people spend with distances, but as I recall, Gail, the distance restriction was six miles. I wouldn't swear to it, but I think that's what it is. Just for information purposes, if you put one of the... Just for information purposes, if you put one of these new towns anywhere in the Ag 1 area, north of 60, you could not put another one, because from 60 to 510 is only seven miles. So if you put one in there for 3,000 acres, however many other acres, which I think is about 20,000, the rest of it could never be included in a new town and therefore get this density bonus. Same way with south of 60. I believe that there is only about 12,000 or 13,000 acres in Ag 1, south of 60, so therefore, if you put one in there of any size, you would preclude everybody else from being able to participate and get a density bonus increase. Just out of curiosity, if, or just as another indication, if you were to put one out, all the way out west, in what is Ag 3, which is a 1 to 20 designation, if you created a town out there of 10,000 acres, which is sort of in the news of Felsner, that's 15 square miles. If you were to do that, somewhere inside the border, you could preclude anybody else from doing it. So my point is, my concern is, is that, well, I understand where it's coming from, I understand what the justification is, I believe this is actually very similar to something that Dr. Baker has presented over and over again. The math is, while theoretical, very misleading and very wrong, as far as being realistic is concerned.
Mike, it always is, I mean, we've certainly pointed that out numerous times up here, that you'll never, ever be able to get what is proposed as the max, it's just not going to happen. I mean, like R M 8, you're not going to put eight units per acre.
Well, I just, I don't disagree with that. So my bottom line is that I just, I would just simply ask that perhaps staff come up with a more realistic approach to how 1, 3, 4, 5 could effectively be implemented, and look at that kind of density, since with all due respect, Gary is so enamored with controlling density, if that were the case, that a more realistic approach to this, instead of a purely theoretical approach to this, frankly, might preclude you from having to take this out of the cop plan. That's really all I was trying to say.
Do you have a number that you're willing to drive a stake in the ground next to that would give us a yield of something less than this? Because in the last 16 years I've been following this, nobody's ever been able to drive a stake in the ground anywhere. And we've danced around this issue, it's been a long time. A long time.
Well, I don't have what that number is, but I would submit that to some extent, some of that probably is market-driven. There has been places to live inside the urban services area to this point in time that have met the needs and the wants of people who have actually moved to Indian River County and Bureau Beach. And so therefore, the market motivation to do this has simply not been there. I think by doing this.
That's exactly right. For 16 years, nobody's taken this up on the offer, so what's the use? Yeah, I mean, it's not been economically feasible to do it at the max, so you know. If you can't make it economically feasible and get, generate enough mass body heat to keep a small, a large development going like these, how is the smaller guy ever going to do it? You'll never, it'll never work, the lower end will never work.
Well, I don't have all the math available, and frankly, I don't know necessarily what that key number is.
Yeah, the critical mass to get a small town going is pretty significant, especially with all the restrictions like Gail said about the overlays for the commercial as residential and industrial.
I understand, we did some preliminary math on that too, and I don't disagree with you, I don't have the math in front of me, and I'm not, I'm not here to say that 2,000 units is a workable number, or 3,000.
I was just hoping you might have had, yeah, I was just hoping you might have had a number that would help us, but see, that's our problem, nobody wants to come up with a number and drive a stake in the ground.
Even with our review that we had, how long did that thing go on with that?
Oh, it was quite a long time.
But thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody else wish to speak? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Move to adopt as presented. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Okay, next item is Bill. County-initiated request to adopt a new public school facilities element and to amend the capital improvement element and the intergovernmental coordination element of the comprehensive plan. I can tell this one's going to be a long one.
Boy, he really shot you. Just cut you up right off the knees there.
I can tell this is going to be a long one.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bill sued Indian River County Planning Division. The purpose of the request before you tonight is to implement new state requirements for school concurrency enacted by Senate Bill 360 in 2005. Those requirements center on coordinating school planning with residential development requests submitted to the county municipalities. For Indian River County, school concurrency must be implemented by March 1, 2008. And it involves four components, the adoption of an interlocal agreement, adoption of a new public school facility element, which is part of the request tonight, amendments to the capital improvements element, and amendments to the intergovernmental coordination element. The interlocal agreement is not part of the comprehensive plan, is not part of this To meet the March 2008 deadline, it was necessary for the county to initiate the comprehensive. Sure.
What about the interlocal agreement?
I didn't understand.
Right, the interlocal agreement is separate from, it's not a comprehensive plan amendment, it's just an agreement between the municipalities, school district, and county, and that's going to primarily deal with the processes and procedures for the school concurrency. What I'm going to get into in the slides is more the public school facility element, which does the data analysis behind a lot of the school concurrency, sets a lot of the level of service standards, a lot of the groundwork for establishing school concurrency, but then the processes again are, are in the interlocal agreement.
Okay. Which is mandatory, each municipality will have to have an interlocal agreement with the school board, i.e. also with the county, to make it how they're going to do it.
So that's just going to be the mechanism.
How you get there is.
Right, right, and this is a lot of the background to establishing it.
You wouldn't want to put your interlocal agreement into the comprehensive plan, because then anytime you'd want to change the interlocal agreement, you'd have to do a comp plan change amendment.
But that has, that has not been adopted yet.
Correct, and this schedule, it's kind of small, but it was included as your backup, in your backup material as well. The top one quarter, or maybe less, just shows interlocal agreement, review and adoption schedule, that's on an entirely different schedule than the comp plan amendments, because as Gail pointed out before, the comp plan amendments earlier on in our presentation, it's a long process. We had to initiate them in January for it to actually take effect in time for the March deadline that the state set for us. Where the interlocal agreement, that's something that you can do with a couple of public hearings at the Board of County Commissioners level, and adopt it in a matter of a couple of months. And actually, there's a working group that's being formed right now, of one elected official from each jurisdiction, and staff representatives to hammer out issues on the interlocal agreement. But looking back at here, at the public school facility element, that's the, right after the local agreement, and I don't know if the shading shows up too well there, but three-quarters of this chart has similar X's going across. You initiate them in January, April at the Plan Zoning Commission, June and July, we're looking at, you know, June or May for a BCC transmittal public hearing to DCA, then it comes back later on in October for adoption public hearing, and then enactment later on January, February. And let me add too, that that schedule was reviewed by the various elected officials at a school concurrency workshop and approved by them back in September. At this time, it's good to just reflect back at what concurrency is and look at the state definition. As written in statute, it says that it's the intent of the legislature that public facilities and services needed to support new development shall be available concurrent with the impacts of such development. And you are all familiar with the fact that we have concurrency for water, sewer, parks, solid waste drainage probes. For schools, the concurrency process and procedures, as I actually got ahead myself here, and I mentioned this, adopt it as part of the interlocal agreement. The public school facility element includes the data analysis, establishes the goals, objectives, and policies, addresses level of service for the schools, establishes concurrency service areas, which I'll show you a slide a little bit later on on that, it discusses proportion share mitigation, it deals with capital improvements, it includes some of those from the school district, and it includes maps showing the various school locations, and again, the service areas. School-related data included within the public school facility element, you've got capacity data for the schools, each of the schools, you have projected enrollment, you have student generation rates for different residential uses, because you've got to assess what your future demand will be based on various generation rates, school facility demands, okay, capital costs for school improvements are all listed. From the county and municipal data side, you have residential development activity that's reviewed in the public school facility element, population growth and projections, and you also look at co-location opportunities. A lot of this is just listed right in the state statute, a lot of these requirements need to be in the public school facility element, including the co-location opportunities and evaluating that. Service area boundaries, within the public school facility element, service area boundaries are school attendance boundaries. Here's an example, we threw up a slide here upon elementary school service area boundary map, and as can be seen by shading, each school has their own service area.
Is there any way we can get that focused better? I mean, this one's fine, but this one over here is. Not sure where the remote is here.
Move closer to the screen.
And each school has their own service area for elementary, each school, of course, for middle schools, they have their own service area, and same thing for high schools, so.
I'm sorry, I, this is the district areas you're showing here, is it not? This breaks down the county into districts.
Right, and this is just the school service areas that are adopted by the school district for each of these elementary schools.
This is not the concurrency districts.
They are the same as the concurrency service areas for schools, for each of the schools.
I thought there were only three districts, that's not true.
No, no, there's, there's three types, middle school, high school, and elementary, but each school has its own service area, and for concurrency purposes, we evaluate them on a school basis.
Right now, there are three districts for middle schools, because we have three middle schools. There are two districts for high schools, and there are how many for elementary? I don't know, about 10?
I'd say about 12 or so.
It's got to be 10 or 12 at least.
Well, Bob, on page 23, you determined that you will not be applying the concurrency test on a district-wide basis, it'll be on a less than a district-wide basis. And now you're saying, for each type of school, there are a different number of districts.
This actually, that statement is in here, because Senate Bill 360 actually recommended that when local governments first establish school concurrency, they should do it on a district-wide basis, but they can do it on a less-than-district-wide. And we are doing it less-than-district-wide, we're doing our school concurrency service areas, which are school attendance zones.
That's what we're looking at here.
You're looking at them for elementary schools. We have a set of boundaries for each school type, elementary, middle, and high.
How are you doing this, just out of curiosity, because that would be a nightmare.
Well, actually, let me tell you, because Bill's probably going to go into this, what's more of a nightmare is when you apply concurrency, state law says that you apply, if you have separate school concurrency service areas, and you don't do a district-wide, state law says you apply school concurrency in that school concurrency service area. So you look at the capacity of the school, and you look at the demand, and you do the test. But if there's not enough capacity, state law says, then you look at contiguous school concurrency service areas for that. So basically, if you have a school concurrency service area, and it's actually adjacent to, it borders, say, three others, and there's not enough capacity available to serve a development project in the school concurrency service area that that project is located, then we as staff, and school board as staff, have to look and see if there's available capacity in any of the adjacent areas. So it gets complex.
But do you divvy up the demographics based on whether households have, you know, one in an elementary, one in middle school, and one in high school? Or?
Yeah, we have.
How do you do that?
We have, well, what we're doing is, we do averages, and we are, because I think a lot of people think that we know more about who's out there and where they live. But we really have no idea, when a development project comes in, what the socioeconomic mix is going to be like. So for our planning level and for our concurrency regulation level, we have to use the school generation rates that we've established here, and we did it a pretty scientific way, used GIS analysis, and the school district has had their edilogue system, they know where every single kid is, where he is in the county, and using GIS technology, it made it really great, we could come up with good school generation rates. But yeah, when a new house comes in, we know how many, or what part of a kid goes in, goes in each category, you know, how many, how many high school, how many elementary school, how many middle school kids. Let me give it back to Bill.
Let me ask a question, maybe it'll come along later.
Craig, your mic is.
Hold on, hold on. That's a good thing.
Which is a good thing. I mean, I said that first.
Now I'm back. I know there's some thought out there, because I've heard this, that even if the school district met all of the responsibilities of a school service area boundary, and needed capacity within that for any one of the elements, elementary, middle, or high school, that a municipality might be able to deny them the ability to build a school in that area, even though they've met them. Now, I don't know whether this is going to be proved to be correct or not, I can't imagine that it would, but there's still some thought on that. My question about that is if that prevailed, and you had an elementary school service boundary, the denial of a municipality to build a school where a capacity was needed, and you had another municipality who wanted to build any school they could get, because they know if you build it, they will come, they could accept that and build the school there, and even provide perhaps land or other opportunities to assist the district in getting the school built, and increase the population in effect in that area because of the denial in another area, is that going to be a possibility? Is that going to be a possibility?
I just can't imagine that scenario working out, being able to deny them the capacity.
Neither can I, but I know that there is some thought to that effect, that that would be allowable.
Let me try to walk through your question. When we're dealing with elementary schools, like right now, the entire county is divided up into school concurrency service areas because they're currently the attendance zones. So what would happen is if we had a development project come in, say, that maybe is in the Pelican Island Elementary concurrency service area and that's schools' attendance zone, which are the same thing. If we had a development project come in and that school was already at capacity, which it's not, it's still got some available capacity. If it was at capacity and there wasn't capacity, say, in the adjacent elementary school concurrency service areas, then the development project couldn't be approved unless there was a provision for additional capacity to be provided. And that can be provided a bunch of different ways. There's the proportionate share mitigation that a developer could do. This gets into a lot of complicated stuff that Greg probably knows a lot more about than I do. But just to tell you a few things, it gets real complicated. What we're using is, and I'm probably going over a lot of stuff that Bill would be going over, given his presentation, but for capacity, we're using FISH capacity, Florida Inventory of School Houses. There are other possible ways you can measure capacity. You could measure it as core capacity, which is really, say, the ability of a school to, it's really the number of student stations that a school could have if it were maxed out, given the constraints of certain core facilities like lunchrooms, cafeterias, things like that. So to give you an idea, going back to the scenario, if we had in the Pelican Island school concurrency service area, didn't have capacity, didn't have capacity in the others, and Pelican Island had more core capacity than it had actual built capacity, maybe a developer could come in and build a wing on the school and that would be prop share mitigation. Or in your case, maybe there's a need to build a new school in that area. And if there wasn't any land available or the city for some reason didn't have any land that was appropriately designated, there would be some, conceivably, that school could be built in a different area. And one of the things that's going to happen and one of the things that the school board's going to need to deal with is when a new school is built, that's really going to change school concurrency service areas, unless the school is designated a magnet school that doesn't have a school concurrency service area. But I'm not sure if you want to go further with the scenario, maybe, did I answer it?
Yes. I'll let it go on. I think it's going to be, you know, it's going to have to be answered in the future. The school district, I know, is not interested in busing children. However, if there was a case where a municipality could deny the building or the addition onto a school that's currently there to add capacity based on student generation, then within that service boundary, there could be another municipality that would say, we'll even pay for the busing and we'll take the load because we're interested in building this community. If that is the case, I can see some enormous problems associated with the service, the school service area boundaries.
I'm sure they'll rear their ugly head sooner or later.
Greg, this gets into an issue that I had. You start your discussion, you're hypothetical, with the municipality denying a site for a school. Take that off the table. Is there an issue of the school board by picking where it's going to build a school driving land, driving growth issues?
It shouldn't.
Well, it shouldn't, but it does.
The capacity, the generation for a new school is really based on where kids are at that time. So the kids are going to be there in that geographic area within a school service boundary, we would hope, to cause a school to be built. It would be justified. I'm looking at the reverse scenario where it's justified, but it's denied by the municipality. If in the interlocal agreement, there was an allowance for them to deny it, then where do those kids go to school? Well, there could be another municipality that wants to grow, who could say, sure, bring them here. We'll even, we'll provide you with the land. We've got a developer that will build your school for you. And so you're moving these kids from where they live to another area, if that's allowable. I can see that scenario possibly happening.
Actually, let me give you an answer to a variation on that scenario. Let's take Pelican Island again and say it's overcapacity, but say Liberty is the adjacent school service area boundary. If there were capacity in Liberty, the school board could make a condition of approval of a development project in the Pelican Island school concurrency service area. They could make it a condition that those kids get bussed to Liberty. So by approving the development project, you're not adversely affecting the other kids in the school concurrency service area. And it's that developers, customers, who are really assuming the burden of the additional transportation.
That has happened before in other locations in the state, especially in the Miami area. And it'll happen here, I'm sure. Screaming right along at the speed of dark.
Yeah, as Bob was saying, there's several ways to measure capacity. We've got the level of service standard set at 100% of FISH capacity for each public school, and that's the Florida Inventory of School Housing Units or Housing?
Houses.
Houses. And that just takes into account permanent classroom space and other factors, dealing with cafeteria sizes and things. And also, I don't know how much I want to get into that issue, but it gets kind of complex. But we look at FISH capacity. Switching over from the public school facility element into capital improvements element and intergovernmental coordination elements, there's just some amendments in here. In the capital improvements elements, we have to update annually and include the school district five-year capital improvement program and estimated revenue summary in the capital improvement element. Now, those two elements or those two items demonstrate the financial feasibility of the school concurrency and shows how the level of service is achieved or maintained. In the intergovernmental coordination element, that's updated to include coordination procedures with the school district. And then just looking at the issue of consistency with the confidence of plan for all of these, the public school facility element, the CIE amendments, and ICE amendments. The proposed amendment meets the third criteria above, which is a substantial change in circumstances. We've got the new state law, and the request is consistent with the confidence of plan. Staff recommends that the Planning and Housing Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the new public school facility element and adopt the capital improvements element and intergovernmental coordination element, text amendment request.
Any questions? I think we've beat that one pretty hard.
I've got about a, let me, should I start off?
Go for it.
First of all, let me say, I think you guys have done a great job. You've really obviously put in a lot of effort here. And I hope the state is paying enough for obviously doing all the work for the rest of the state.
Actually, Bill didn't go into this, but.
We're leaders on this.
Yeah, Indian River County was asked to be a pilot community. There were six communities that were pilot communities. We're asked to be a pilot community, and by doing that, the state gave us $200,000 between us and the school board, and we used it to hire a consultant, and we spent most of it on the consultant and worked extensively with the consultant. I can tell you, using consultants isn't a turnkey process. It's not that you give them an assignment and then get a product. It's going through and modifying the product a lot. But the good news is, the state, in our case, the state funded a significant portion of this that was beneficial to us.
And Bob, to compliment you and your staff and the school district, I think that the allowance given Indian River County was because you had performed very well in the past in having agreements between the board and the county commission and working together for site locations and all of those things before it was required.
On page three, you've got population numbers. Which are estimates and which are real? You start at 1995 and you go to 2006.
All the way through 2006, those are all.
Say again.
Through 2006, those are, as a source indicates, University of Florida Annual Population Studies and U.S. Census Bureau, but it's data showing estimates. But those are real.
Right. The table below that, 12.2, are the projections.
But up through 2006 is real, Bob?
Yes.
I couldn't reconcile them readily with the permit data on the next page. Is that just because I couldn't do it? Now, the permits are being issued at a far greater pace and the population is going up.
Let me, let me drill down kind of deep. When you start dealing with permits, you can look at permits from several different perspectives. You can look at permit applications applied, you can look at permits issued, and then you can look at certificates of occupancy. There'll be some loss at each step in the process. Basically, a lot more applications than COs and more permits issued than COs. The other thing is, what this doesn't indicate is how many of these actually get occupied, how many are occupied by permanent residents, things like that, which makes it real difficult to reconcile permit information to population information. And generally, what we've been finding is fewer persons per household, particularly people moving here. You know, you get retirees and empty nesters, and it may be even under two persons per household.
Okay, if I can go on.
And there's usually a significant lag time between issuance and CL. You know, best case, you're usually talking eight or nine months.
Let me go on, Bob. You show projections on capacity usage over on page 18 or 19. And as I understand that, you base that on the population projections that you're using. You also, interestingly, Bob, you also very interestingly say you do a sanity check, taking a look at residential development projects that are in the pipeline, which I was impressed to see. What did you include, I mean, where did you, on these new residential developments, would you come up with 26,000? And others have come up with much larger numbers. But it looks to me like you went back here. You're not just talking vested projects, you're talking some sort of pipeline.
Yeah. And I'm not sure what criteria, one of the consultants put this together, but he put it together from our vacant parcel program that we have, where we have a computer program that we put all the projects in and we can gather a lot of data.
I mean, for example, you've got waterways here for 1,500, I mean, all sorts of units. It's all their units.
Right.
So you're obviously not using vested. What are you using? I mean, you're going back before vesting, which, as I say, I found very interesting you're doing it, and I compliment you on doing it, but I wonder what is your database? What's your cutoff point or?
Actually, I think we used all the projects in the community development report. Yeah. The community development.
And even an application filed?
Yeah. Yeah, these are not, these are not all.
Does it include everything in the cities as well?
All the ones that we know of and get put in our system. Yeah, we don't, we don't have as good an information from the municipalities as we have from the county.
Okay. I'm curious there, what you did. But then, what you don't show is, using this data, how that compares to the capacity analysis data that you did based on population projections. I mean, is there, there was a sanity test you were going to use this for, I gathered. Was there, it's not here in these papers. How did it test out?
I think we put, I think we generally put the two together. I think the sanity test part, I think if Stan and Bill help me, the school board has a demographer who works for them, a consulting demographer, and she goes out and actually surveys some of the developers. How are you going? How do you see the market? What do you see building? How many do you see building? And I think that's used a little more to try to determine where is, where are the kids going to be, not so much how many? Because we're still looking at kind of like projections and absorption rates and applying the general, the student generation rate to the projected population. But even when you get a countywide number, then you have to disaggregate that into the various school attendance zone, school concurrency service area boundaries. So I think that's where the sanity test really is.
So it's not for determining how much, it's determining where?
Right.
Well, that goes with the next question. Right now, there's a deficiency in certain areas. And the conclusion here is with projected new schools, that deficiency will be eliminated.
Yes.
Is there any knowledge whether those new schools are being put in the locations where the projects are coming in? If you understand what I'm.
Right.
It's a fairly obvious question.
And I think there should be, obviously.
Right. Yeah, and I think, and the answer to that question is yes. We know that there's, say, a capacity with Felsmer Elementary School in that area. And we know that there's going to be additional growth there with the Vera Leque Estates area not too far. And I think one of the new north county schools is going to be close to that concurrency service area. So I think the answer to your question is yes. And even though, one of the things with, and Greg knows this much, and feel free to chime in anytime, Greg knows that when you've got a five-year facility plan and you put a school out there, say, in year three or year four, you don't know the. out there, say, in year three or year four, you don't know the specific location. It could be maybe within a couple of miles. These days, because of the county and school district working together, the school district actually has an inventory of school sites. You know, like the South County Initiative School Site, the Point West School Site, the Waterway Village School Site, any other. So they've got some out there sitting unused, but I think like in the northwest county situation, they need a, they're probably going to get a school site from the Anson property in the city of Felsmer. The short answer is yes.
I guess, Bob, the point, why, again, I think you guys have done a lot for just starting on this. Going forward, it would strike me that it would be useful to see the numbers on where the projects seem to be requiring schools. And then when you reach the conclusion that the capital plan's got the schools that are needed, that's overlaid over. You'd have some tables or some analysis that shows that the schools are going where the demand is, rather than, as it is here, which is just showing it on a higher countywide basis and not trying to break it down by districts.
Well, if I can just add too, and page 18, I think you might be referring somewhat to that chart and the school student enrollment projections and utilization chart.
Yeah, that's a chart that shows, that's a chart that shows the buildup and shows schools way over capacity. And then you lump in the new school and the relationship between that new school and the way over capacity is not shown. If you see what I'm-
If I could just speak to the, maybe help a little bit. If not, I'll be short anyway. In terms of geographic areas, if you look, just look at that first chart on 18, elementary schools. There's a South County Elementary School Site.
Page 18.
Page 18. That's a new school that will be going in during the time period. There's a North Central Elementary School Site, like the Waterway Site in the central county, and it can also service some of the north county. And then there's the Felsmer Area Elementary. As Bob said, that could be on the Anson Site. There've been discussions with Felsmer on that. So you actually have the elementary school sites in this table in the three growth areas of the county: Felsmer Area, North Central Area, and the South County Area. So I, to that degree, I think that the geography works for where those future schools are planned to be. You're correct, I don't, we don't have a point map of all the development areas, but at least I can just tell you that there is a geographic breakout in that, for instance, in the elementary school table.
Well, the assumption is that with those new schools going in, all this overcapacity goes away.
Correct. That and the possibility, obviously you want to minimize it, but changes in school attendance zones is always a possibility. I mean, going into the future, that's-
No magic wand.
Right.
Well, I just have to believe there's some tightening up here that would be useful as you go forward.
It's just so unbelievably complex. It's far beyond numbers, George, in that the school district makes a decision, the board makes a decision about a facilities list. And they say, at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, we think the best educational environment is going to be at this number for elementary schools, at this number for middle schools, and this number for high schools. So just hypothetically, if you've got an elementary school out there that was built with a capacity, a core capacity of, let's just say, 750 kids, but the school district at some point, the school board down the path says, we don't want more than 500 kids in our schools because we're not going to get the best educational environment unless we do that. If they make that decision down the road, that 750-capacity school is now a 500-capacity school, because they've changed the facilities list, which causes a change in the projection of the need for schools in the geographic areas.
It ripples all over the place.
Yes. And I don't know whether the school district still uses the cohort process, which is very accurate, unless you have enormous growth because an industry comes in, or you have a loss because an industry decides to leave and the adult age parents take off and have to move to another area. Then the cohort, you're going to have a little gap for a couple of years. But it's basically, George, so accurate that when you have a five- or 10-year projection, the school district can see, based on that facilities list, how many schools are going to need. And then the edulog process shows them where they're going to need them. Because with that software, they can take that facilities list and say, between these two schools, what would be the best location by their best thought on it, and then putting it into the software. The software draws the schools based on that capacity number, 500 or 550, and shows you exactly where those kids are going to come from to fill that school. So regardless of this process that staff is having to go through, which is projection, the reality is that the intent has always been and will be to put schools as close to where kids are as you possibly can, because nobody wants to put them on a bus and make them travel 50 miles if they can keep from it.
Well, that's right. But all of a sudden now, we have a concurrency test. And all of a sudden now, we have developers coming in and saying, we want to build 500 houses here. And all of a sudden, you've got to show that there's capacity available for those students located in that district. And the fact that the school board's proposing a school four districts over, they could be wrong. In any event, there's an obligation to find that there's going to be capacity available. And this doesn't do it, because it's based on a district-wide analysis. I think it changes what the school board has done in the past and requires an overlay of the needs, of the demands that will be created by a specific development project.
When it comes down to the point of building a school, you're going to fill the capacity of each of the schools that you have within the service boundary for individual platforms, elementary, middle, or high. And then, based on that developer causing more kids to come into an area, that's where you're going to build a school. That's-
Well, I understand the pragmatic of what you're saying.
It's the alley.
And I'm trying not to compare it to roads, but I will in a moment. I think a new regime has been introduced by the state law. And that's a regime of concurrency and development. And I'm not sure the school board's going to be happy with seeing this all happening, but it has happened.
I think they're going to be okay as long as they can determine where they build their schools. If there's an outside entity such as a municipality which can deny them the allowance to build a school in an area where the capacity is needed, then, I agree. Then the school district's going to be, the school board's going to be upset with that process, because again, they're going to build schools where kids are, if allowed to do so.
This is supposed to settle that. But will it?
Let me quickly make a couple other points and then somebody else. Proportionate share, I have trouble with that here. If I don't, I may not understand it. When the school board has things in their first three-year plan, it's committed, it's financed. When it's in the fourth and fifth year, is that like the state's fourth and fifth year?
What?
It could be mañana.
No, it's like, it's like the county's fourth and fifth year. A developer can pay, he can pay and go for facilities that are in the fourth and fifth year.
Well, my concern is that, is there then a, the developer pays his proportionate share, is that going to create a commitment-
Yes.
-to build that school?
Yes. Yes.
Because this isn't like a highway, and if it's not built, well, you just go slower.
Oh, no, no. There's a commitment. When we accept proportionate share money, or we vest projects on a facility that's going to be built, we have a lot of commitments. If we don't do it on time, we have to go back to the state and amend the plan and tell them why we didn't do it, and then maybe suffer any consequences.
This was a sore point when 360 was coming down, as to the pay and go thing, that money has, what we finally came up with, that money has to be tagged, that it can't be used for anything else. It's for schools slash schools slash schools. You cannot divert it. It's a hard commitment to build that unit.
I'm trying to stick to a schedule. I'll take a break every 90 minutes, so we're about right there right now. So let's take a small break and then come back and finish this and-
Pardon?
Let's take a break.
Okay.
Oh, just for your information, Donna was not feeling well, so she had to leave.
Bob, let me ask you a couple questions. When is this going into effect?
It has to go into effect March 1st, 2008, and that's what we anticipate.
This is when concurrency will have to be met for each development project that then comes along?
Yes.
Is there any grandfather periods if you're out of concurrency?
No. The way it's going to work, the way it's structured here and in the interlocal agreement is, any project that already has preliminary plat approval does not have to have a concurrency test. So the concurrency test will apply to any future projects that need to get preliminary plat approval or site plan approval for multifamily.
If they have that and expires-
They would have to, yes.
When you get a development, you're going to get a certificate of concurrency issued by the school board, a letter, you call it, whatever you call it.
Yes.
Is your staff going to see the backup on that and review the backup?
Yeah, actually, all of this is detailed out in, to use acronyms, the ILA, the Inter Local Agreement.
Which hasn't been signed yet.
It hasn't been signed, and there's still a lot of tweaking to do with it. But the way it's structured in the ILA is, a development application will be submitted to the appropriate local government, the county, city of Sebastian, whatever. After a sufficiency review, the local government will send it to the school district, who is going, which is going to maintain what's called a DRT, a Development Review Table. It's going to be a spreadsheet. And we're working on coming up with some computerization, and that's another whole story. But basically, the school district is going to have this database, which will have the actual enrollment by school, the vested kids, and they'll have the capacity, and then they'll therefore have a field of available capacity. So anytime a project comes in, they will do a test, and if it's okay, they will issue their letter, whatever it's called, concurrent, something, a school concurrency letter.
School Capacity Availability Determination Letter, I think?
That's it. So they will issue one of those. That will go back to the local government. And then, when the applicant pays his, all of his impact fees to get vested, then that vesting will be inputted into the spreadsheet.
My question was, will your staff review the determination-
the whole ILA, one of the major purposes is to have the local governments and the school board share information a lot more and exchange it a lot more. Yes.
Two more questions. The concurrency is based on the facility being in place three years after the?
Actually, being under construction.
Being under construction three years after occupancy or whatever. It's the road test.
Yes. It's the same three years.
And in roads, you can tell people, you know, crawl is not bad. We're terribly sorry you got to wait longer in a traffic light. Is three years appropriate for schools?
Well, actually, that's state law. So, whether it's appropriate or not.
That's it?
Yeah.
Final question. Take a look at page 51 of the capital improvement element. Objective one. It says you change 2010 to 2015. That covers everything? I read that to cover all capital facilities. And what's the meaning of, I mean, is that just SOP or standard operating procedure? Or, it says by 215, the county will eliminate existing deficiencies. That's an awful far out period. I don't know what it applies to.
You've got a good point. And I'm not sure. But, let me just tell you, one of the things I stress to my staff, and that they know very well by now, is objectives have to have a specific time orientation, and they need to be specific, and they need to be measurable. Now, that being said, you're probably right. 2015 is a little far out there. It-
That applies to everything, not just schools.
Oh, right. Right. That's right. We're, this is the whole capital improvement element.
Looks like you're just moving a date out there to get breathing, a lot of breathing room. Take a look at it, Bob.
I will. Good point.
Is there any other discussion? We do have, this is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't see anybody in the audience that's going to speak, so we'll close the public hearing.
I move to adopt as presented, with the caveat that Bob will look at that last item that we were just talking about, of course. And I don't give these out easily, but this is a stunningly complex piece of material to put together.
It is. It's very complex.
You people have done an unbelievably good job. You need, you're really proud of yourself to do this. Well done.
Second both issues.
I agree on both points.
Okay. Do we have a vote?
Can we have a discussion a little bit?
Sure.
Does any of this help educating a kid?
What did you say? Does any of this help educate a kid?
No. You know, hopefully, hopefully it will. When you take everything together, smaller class sizes, maybe better school facilities to go in. But, one of the things that I think is an objective of the school board is to essentially eliminate portables and create a better learning environment. So, I've, and actually, I think the question better goes to Greg Smith, but I would say, yes, it will.
Yeah, I don't work there anymore.
I wasn't a believer in this at first, but I think, I think it will. Actually, it'll ensure that the buildings, the construction is done. There will be no excuses. You have to have one or the other. You can't, you can't build the houses without the schools. You can't build a school. It ties it all together. I think it's a damn good link.
Does it encourage people to, that they can walk to school instead of being busing? Does it discourage busing? Or, any influence there?
Yes, it does.
I can tell you, if planners had their preference, schools would be small, they'd all be located in the middle of the development, and all the, particularly elementary schools we're talking about, all the kids would be able to walk to them. And if we were starting all the time with clean slates, if planning would be easy, and it'd be great to do. And if the school district wasn't faced with budget constraints and having to, having a lot of schools with core capacity of 750 and having fiduciary responsibilities to the taxpayers and everything like that, we would probably have more of that. This doesn't specifically address having the smaller school sizes and the kids walking to schools. But, I think we've accomplished a lot of that in the last few years with the Point West school site, the South County Initiative school site, the Waterway Village school site, the most likely Anson school site. All of these are integrated into residential communities, and really, that's the function of planning. We tried to get one in the West County Initiative, and so far, we haven't been successful. But, I think those schools are going to have a lot of walkability.
But, the capacity looks like it's the same. You are not, it doesn't appear to me that you're reducing the capacity.
That wasn't the intent of the legislation. The intent of legislation is to make sure the schools were built.
Do you mean the individual school size, the 550s or 750s that are here?
They're just, they're still the same. You are not reducing down. So, even with the waterways and these other, they're still having the-
And I think Greg can probably tell you, you've got certain economies that you've got to work with.
Absolutely. So, that's, the best figure is around 500 then?
It's five, I think it's 550 for elementary, about 1,100 for middle, and 19 for high schools. And there are two issues there. There's one is the belief by the curriculum staff that the numbers of a school make a difference, and that the board approves that facilities list based on what's best for kids in the learning environment. But, number two is where are the dollars? When you reduce the number of students in a school, you've still got the air conditioning system, you've got the principal, the staff, all of the costs associated with a higher, greater number. So, you've got to balance that. It's how much money have you got? What best can you do for kids? It's a tough decision.
Okay. We have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Unanimous. Next item is Phil.
Well done, guys.
Yes. County initiated request to amend the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. Plan amendment number, I'm not going to read that.
Thank you. Phil Matson, Indian River County MPO staff. Before I get started, I'm going to hand out a change that we made to policy 1.4. This is an additional change that we've made, not your agenda packet.
Thanks.
Is there also page 106?
Thank you.
That we should have? Is it missing?
Yeah, I noticed that too. I guess it didn't make it to the introduction office. 106 is simply the continuation of the sentence that begins on 105. No other changes are made on 106. The end of that policy is right there. So, you're really not missing anything?
The least in the end's in the middle of the sentence.
Yeah. You're missing the trailing words in that sentence. We'll make you every effort to get you a copy of that. Comprehensive plan amendment, the proposed amendments today are changes to the traffic impact analysis process as reflected in policies 1.4 and 1.5, an update of the roadway level of service table, table 4.71, as well as a number of text changes and corrected mistakes and errors, and general revisions to the tables and figures in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. If you hearken back to what Gail said earlier in his introduction to comprehensive plans, comprehensive plan may be amended only in such a way as to preserve the internal consistency of the plan pursuant to section 163 Florida statutes. Need for plan amendments, plan amendments could be made under the statute due to a mistake, oversight, or substantial change in circumstances, as well as a swap or reconfiguration in land use. Since we're looking at three general amendments to the comprehensive plan, they cover more than one of these plan amendment justifications. Give you a little background on the traffic impact analysis process. In July of 2006, a study was completed by McMahon Associates. That study compared our practices to peer counties and made several recommendations for the traffic impact analysis and study process. The approved recommendations were aimed at streamlining our review process, fully capturing the impacts of large developments, concentrating on big picture issues and so forth. A number of these changes would affect our land development regulations and guidelines and so forth, but only a couple of these changes will affect the policies in the comprehensive plan, and therefore, we're proposing changes to the comprehensive plan as required. To policy 1.4, which I just handed out, we're making a number of administrative corrections. Some of these are a result of the study. For instance, changing the fifth edition of the Highway Capacity Manual, which has been superseded now to the seventh edition. Also, making changes to how an applicant can calculate capacity for traffic study purposes. That appears in the fourth bullet on policy 1.4, where previously, one could use their choice of the Florida Level of Service Handbook Generalized Tables, which is a very standardized method of assessing level of service. Or, as an alternative, as we had indicated here, capacity may be determined by an arc plan analysis, highway capacity manual analysis, or speed and delay study. We've taken this option away, limited it to the standardized highway capacity manual methodology. So, this is, in a way, less-
May I stand up and applaud you? I'm glad you got rid of that. That needed to go a long time ago.
And so, that's the change to capacity calculation methods, and that should standardize things like we say, make everybody subject to the same rules. With respect to policy 1.5, which starts on your next page, we see that we have a number of administrative corrections as well to policy 1.5. One thing we've done throughout is to change the use of the word analysis to the word study. So, now, we're consistent in the jargon requesting traffic studies. One substantive change was to the study area boundary, whereas previously, we would have taken into account the lesser of a 5% project traffic or five peak hour trips as impacting, pardon me, as impacting an area of where a study needs to be considered. We're now proposing that to be a change of an eight-mile radius of the project site. Project traffic meets or exceeds eight trips on a two-lane road or 10 trips on a four-lane road. This is more consistent with widely accepted practices. It makes intuitive sense on where do you eventually draw the line on proposed impacts of traffic from new development. Eight trips is very, by the way, coincidentally, it appears to be about 1% of what's required of an 880 two-lane capacity standard in a directional table. So-
I was going to comment, you're really not making any change. This is what was approved in the LDR.
It's exactly-
Is that correct?
Yes. Not all of those LDR changes need to be reflected in the comp plan. A few do, and that's all-
This one is nothing new.
Correct.
So, I, having lost the argument last time, I-
Just wanted to scratch the surface.
Few of the other changes proposed. We're making changes to the roadway level of service tables. The state established a level of service for the strategic intermodal system several years ago. In our last comp plan amendment, we had changed the level of service on the segments on our strategic intermodal system. SIS is the fancy name for the freeways and the major highways that connect region to region in the state of Florida. And the state has a very high level of service expectation for that system, because that's where all the goods and commerce flows throughout the state. So, they've established these standards. In our last go-round, we changed them. We didn't change one. It was an oversight or mistake on our part. That was State Road 60 from I-95 to 98th Avenue. We're remedying that at this time. There's no impact to proposed developments. In fact, Mike Ray's theoretical impossible town could spring up somewhere on 60, and we'd probably still have capacity. In the latest capacity table, we had about 1,400 hourly trips available on that segment. Other changes, we've changed the Dixie Highway right-of-way to 100 feet. This is consistent with the needs and the functional class standards for Dixie Highway, which was reclassified and arterial in 2004. We also had a correction, a sort of a Scribner's error, where we indicated that the right-of-way needs RD, that's indeed a level of service readout, not the right-of-way needed. So, we're correcting that error. Once again, to summarize, the comprehensive plan can be amended in such a way as to preserve the internal consistency of the plan. Everything we're doing's already been amended into the long, pardon me, with respect to traffic impact studies, into the LDRs. And that concludes the presentation. Our recommendation is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend approval by the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the comprehensive plan text amendments.
Any discussion?
One question. Over on page 104, average travel speeds of a link.
their choice of the Florida Level of Service Handbook Generalized Tables, which is a very standardized method of assessing level of service. Or, as an alternative, as we had indicated here, capacity may be determined by an art plan analysis, highway capacity manual analysis, or speed and delay study. Uh, we've taken this option away, limited it to the standardized highway capacity manual methodology. So this is, in a way, less-
May I stand up and applaud you? I'm glad you got rid of that. That needed to go a long time ago.
And, uh, so that, that's the change to capacity calculation methods, and that should standardize things like we say, make everybody, uh, subject to the same rules. With respect to policy 1.5, uh, which it starts on your next page, uh, we see that we have a number of administrative corrections as well to policy 1.5. One thing we've done throughout is to change the use of the word "analysis" to the word "study." So now, uh, we're consistent in the jargon requesting traffic studies. One substantive change was to the study area boundary, whereas previously, uh, we would have taken into account the lesser of a 5% project, uh, traffic or five peak hour trips as impacting- pardon me, as, uh, impacting an area of where a study needs to be considered. We're now proposing that to be a change of an eight mile radius of the project site. Project traffic meets or exceeds eight trips on a two-lane road, or 10 trips on a four-lane road. This is more consistent with widely accepted practices. It makes intuitive sense on a where do you eventually draw the line on proposed, uh, impacts of traffic from new development.
That's-
Eight trips is very, by the way, coincidentally, it appears to be about 1% of what's required of an 880, uh, two-lane capacity standard in a directional table, so.
I was gonna comment, you, you're really not making any change. This is what was approved in the LDR.
It's exactly-
Is that correct?
Yes. Not all of those LDR changes need to be reflected in the comp plan, a few do, and that's all-
This, this one is nothing new.
Correct.
So I, having lost the argument last time, I-
Just wanted to scratch the surface, so.
Few of the other changes proposed, we're making changes to the roadway level of service tables. Uh, the state established a level of service for the strategic intermodal system several years ago. In our last comp plan amendment, uh, we had changed the level of service on the segments on our strategic intermodal system. SIS is the fancy name for the freeways and the major highways that connect region to region in the state of Florida. And the state has a very high level of service expectation for that system, because that's where all the goods and, and commerce flows throughout the state. So they've established these standards. In our last go-around, we changed them. We didn't change one, uh, was an oversight or a mistake on our part, that was State Road 60 from I-95 to 98th Avenue. We're remedying that at this time. There's no impact to proposed developments. In fact, Mike Ray's theoretical impossible town could spring up somewhere on 60, and we'd probably still have capacity. Uh, in the latest, uh, capacity table, we had about 1,400 hourly trips available on that segment. Other changes, uh, we've changed the Dixie Highway right-of-way to 100 feet. This is consistent with the needs and the functional class standards for Dixie Highway, which was reclassified in arterial in 2004. We also had a correction, a sort of a Scribner's error, where we indicated that the right-of-way needs RD, that's indeed a level of service readout, not the right-of-way needed. So we're correcting that error. Once again, to summarize, the comprehensive plan can be amended in such a way as to preserve the internal consistency of the plan. Everything we're doing's already been amended into the long, uh, pardon me, with respect to traffic impact studies, into the LDRs. And, uh, that concludes the presentation. Our recommendation is for the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission to, uh, recommend approval by the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the comprehensive plan text amendments.
Any discussion?
One question. Over on page 104, uh, average travel speeds of a link. Where are you going? Um, the third bullet down. Existing service level will be derived by using peak hour, traffic volume ranges. I assume that means counts.
Correct.
Or, what does average travel speeds of a link mean?
There's two way to- two ways to calculate level of service, and you can think about it this way. The state, in setting up its level of service standards, is saying, well, a level of service standard of B, for instance, can be a certain number of cars relative to the capacity that the road could handle. On the other hand, you can have more than that number of cars, so long as the link is moving along at an acceptable level of speed. So there are really two ways, two definitions of B, or C, or D.
I've never seen-
This is omitting that second definition, and it goes hand in hand with taking away the ability of an applicant to say, well, look, the road is performing, traffic is moving quickly, we have more than the number of cars allocated for our level of service, uh, but the speed is good. So it's just basically taking away that option.
I haven't seen it used.
Actually, really, the only methodology that's been used for arterial analysis is art plan. Uh, H- HCS, Highway Capacity Manual, uh, hasn't been used either, 'cause art plan is the only arterial analysis methodology you can use and actually get a number. You, you can actually get an alternative number to correspond to your level of service, say, level of service D. Like Phil said, speed delay studies are appropriate in certain circumstances. They can show that a road is operating appropriately when there might be a concern that it isn't. But what it generally can't do is establish a number that you can go by.
Right. It's a softer method.
They're taking out art plan analysis, Bob.
Yeah, and actually, the reason we're doing that, and I know y'all like us taking that out, is because with prop share now, with prop share mitigation, uh, applicants don't need to do that. In fact, it was complicating our prop share, because what was happening is, if an arterial analysis was done, like was done, say, on State Road 60, it increased the capacity of the four-lane divided roadway that's in the generalized level of service table. So it may have added maybe like 150 hourly directional trips, and that complicated us doing prop share mitigation, because, I'm kinda having to drawl deeply, but, what, one of the basis of prop share is you use the, the service level increase when you're ma- making an improvement. If you're going from four-lane to six-lane, you look, lanes, you look at how many additional trips does that give you? Well, normally, that will give you around maybe 800 trips, if you're adding one lane in one direction. But if you've done an arterial analysis and actually squeezed out some more capacity, it'll be less than 800, and then doing prop share, that means that each individual applicant will pay more, so.
Oh, my God, yes.
So basically, this will make our lives a little easier.
A little simpler, yeah.
Any other discussion?
I've got one question about, uh, old Dixie. South of 12th Street, you're going to 100 feet of roadway, uh, in Eastman? Isn't that, that's gonna move a lot of buildings, isn't it?
Let me just tell you, this is-
We need the improvement, don't get me wrong.
Right, and what we use this primarily for is when development projects come in, how much right-of-way do we either have them dedicate, or do we buy from them? When it actually comes down to doing a project, to maybe four-laning a road, we look a lot closer, and we do a design, and, and maybe we can squeeze a four-lane divided into 80 feet, but the engineers really don't like it. Uh, so we, we do a site-specific case-by-case analysis when it's the project level, but when we're looking at it kind of globally, we, we need to look at what a standard right-of-way width is for a four-lane divided road, and use that as a basis for right-of-way exactions.
Yep.
Any other? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Don't see anybody that wants to talk, so I'll close it.
Move to adopt as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass is unanimously. Uh, commissioners' matters. Anybody? I have one question I'd like to ask the staff. Um, Bob, whomever, uh, there's some developers that are walking away now from some large developments, you know, in South County, and I think some major developer, like, walked away from one that was like 1,500 homes, or something like that. Educate me as to, when the developer comes in and he draws those permits, he gets the plat done, draws the permits, and, and, and he walks away from all this, the people that have bought those homes, is the permit in the name of the developer? Or how does the homeowner, or the property owner now get the permit to develop his house? How does that work?
Well, the market has definitely changed out there. It's, it's slowed down a lot, there's, there's a lot of stuff not happening. I think a project, probably the project you might be talking about is Bristol Bay.
Yeah.
It's a WCI project up there at County Road 510 and US-1. Uh, in this case, they, they never got to the point where they created the lots. They never got the final plat.
They never plotted it.
And, and the good thing is, part of the proj- the commercial part of the project was sold to Jerry Swanson, and he is moving ahead, and I think he's negotiating maybe to purchase the rest of the project. I think the other good thing is, they are putting in all the infrastructure right now. They're going ahead, and they're gonna put in all the landscaping, so the project's going to look good, it's going to be an aesthetic-looking site, it's not going to look like, and-
Sort of, yeah.
Yeah, it's not gonna be abandoned.
That's the one everybody raises, and you, you give your- uh, there's so many out there. Are there, are there problems?
I think-
I don't mean are there sales problems, but are there problems being created from the perspective of the county or of homebuyers?
No. It's, uh, really, most of the big projects are the big national developers who actually are plowing ahead and still coming in getting permits. We, we still have the Lenars, the Sen taxes, the Devastas, uh, some of those are- they're still coming in and building houses and, and, and making some sales. Actually, one thing is that a lot of, several of them have reduced their prices. The Lenar has in a couple of its projects, and Sen tax has in theirs.
Well, could I, if I could just add one thing to that, um, I, it was, I think, really smart, when the county changed the rule to build at least 75% before final plat, because, you know, we, a, a lot of projects didn't, didn't get platted with nothing-
Excellent point.
...in the ground. I think we would've been in a lot worse shape if that change of the LDRs hadn't, hadn't happened. It was a really good initiative.
Great point.
Made, made- we, we've seen some benefits, we think.
When a, a del- a developer clears the property, and, and they've got to build out, say, over five or six years, and they isolate one section, but they've done the burms and the infrastructure on the, on the side that they're not gonna use for three or four years, perhaps, is there any requirement by the developer to cause that soil to stay where it is?
Stabilize, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, um, we, we look at the stabilization. Actually, one of my staff is really good, he's one of, one of the environmental planners, also a certified arborist, and I know we're having problems with Waterway Village and getting complaints with dust and wind, and the soil was eroding away, and he actually gave them some recommendations as a product they could use to put down and stabilize the soil. But, but, yeah, we're gonna be looking at mulching or seeding, or, or something in, in the case that a developer's doing that. They, like, Devasta prepared the, was it the school site? And they have to do that down at South County Initiative, yeah, we're, we specifically- and these days, these days, you will see in every development project, in every single-family house, you'll see a silt fence around it now.
Wow.
Um, the, the stormwater requirements, and this, part of this is because of the NPDEF.
Wow.
Um, sometimes the silt fences aren't put up perfectly, and sometimes they're not maintained as well as they should, but I can tell you, it's night and day from, say, five years ago.
Then you could play tennis on some of them.
There, there are some, though, Bob, that are large, and, and it's especially evident right now, when we're getting these 15 to 20 mile an hour breezes, you know, after every front that goes through, and it's just enormous amounts of soil that are moved to other areas because, I don't guess there's, somebody's not requiring them to stabilize their soil with, with something.
Give us a call. Give Stan a call, and we'll take care of it.
So, like, the landscaping ordinance that's gonna be coming through, what about out there at 510th, US-1? Is that, is, how, will that kick in?
They already have site plan approval, and they, they have their preliminary-
For, in their time period?
They're still within their time period. They have, um, they have a phased site plan. I don't happen to know the phasing schedule, you know, right now, but, um, it's, but, but what you're bringing up is a point that it, it could be that a project gets partially constructed and then approvals run out on some phases they don't do, and in those cases, I think you could see some, see some projects that won't get done, I think. And they will eventually come in and have to, have to come back through the process and meet the current landscaping code. I think there may be some larger projects where the phasing doesn't get done for a while, and they will have to come in on the latter phases and, and, and in compliance. But Bristol Bay, I think, will, at least part of it, will be developed under their current plans.
Uh, Stan, is there anything we need to talk about on the workshop that's set for the 25th, uh, 1 to 5? I don't know if any, uh, any-
I got the email.
Any member have any, uh, questions?
No questions, no.
Or Stan, is there anything that need to, needs to be, uh-
Not at this point, you know, I am hearing from some of the, some of the panelists, and I understand, I think every one of those groups are meeting, and so, if, if they get material to staff, certainly we'll send out an agenda and any backup material. We don't know whether we're gonna get any or get a lot, but as the time moves closer, we will send you a packet, and we're not sure what's gonna be in it.
They're meeting, I know, but I, I wouldn't-
Yes. Don't, don't know if we're gonna get any, any, anything ahead of time or not, but we're looking forward to it.
Any other commissioner items? Um, planning?
Just a couple of things to highlight quickly. On March 20th, the board, uh, adopted the changes to the landscape ordinance and the, and the related ordinances, and, uh, the effective date of that ordinance was at the end of March, and they went with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to have 90 days after that, which will turn out to be June 29th, um, that any applications that were filed, you know, before the effective date, they must be approved by June 29th, site plan or preliminary plat. What we did, a couple of days after the board adopted the ordinance, is we sent out a notice to all the applicants, 81 applications, uh, site plans, preliminary plats. So, you know, we think some of them will be approved before June 29th, some, probably quite a few won't. Um, the, the biggest impacts, uh, will probably be the, any larger projects and doing the literal zone requirements, so I think we'll see, you know, some projects just won't be moving forward, and, and aren't anyway. But we did notify the applicants, and, and believe me, the word is out there. Um, the other two items I want to mention briefly, uh, the top hat entails dog kennel. That was appealed and went to the, to the Board of County Commissioners, and, and we tried to make it clear in our report and in the presentation that they did propose some additional conditions and mitigation, that, that they did not propose here in, in front of you all, uh, but the board did wind up on a 3 to 2 vote denying the appeal, so that project is denied. But it, it, it might be interesting, if you, if you wanna take a look at the, at the staff report and, and look at the proposal, they did add some conditions to it, but it didn't rise to the level that got, got them approval. The other item, I just wanted to know, you may have heard that there was going to be a board hearing on the source appeal, was to be held on April 18th. Uh, it is not going to be held on April 18th. The, the issue of jurisdiction, whether the county has jurisdiction, the board has jurisdiction to hear the case or not, uh, a judge has, has ruled on that. I don't know that the ruling is necessarily final, but, but certainly, at this point in time, there, there will be no hearing on the source, and it may not get back to the board.
Is it a final ru- order?
They filed a writ of prohibition, which basically says, board doesn't have any jurisdiction to hear the matter since an appeal has already been filed. The judge granted that writ of prohibition and issued a rule to show cause why it, why it should not continue. Uh, the responding party, I think, has 20 days to respond. Additionally, there have been other motions filed. I think there's been a motion to dismiss that's called up for hearing in June. The notice came in today. I think there's an hour time reserved, so is it, it may come back depending on more court rulings, but not-
Who issued that order?
Judge Hawley did.
Motion to dismiss?
And the motion to dismiss was-
No, no, the motion to dismiss was filed by one of the parties. Judge Hawley will hear that motion in June. But until that, the, until Judge Hawley rules on the matters before him, the county commission cannot hear the matter.
And the writ of prohibition is not a final order?
I think he entered the writ of prohibition, and I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure on it. I think he entered the writ of prohibition to prevent the Board of County Commissioners from hearing the matter-
While he hears the rest of it.
Correct, while he hears the rest of the arguments on the case.
Interesting. Any other attorney matters?
No.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see that.